Good evening and welcome to City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal action is taken. Following Governor Inslee's statewide mandate, mask mandate, facial masks are required to be worn at all times while in the council chambers. If any individual isn't able to comply with this order, then the meeting will be recessed until compliance is met. If compliance is not met and the individual refuses to leave the chambers, then the meeting either will recess and reconvene only virtually or be adjourned. The agenda packet is available on the City of Pasco's website, Please note, the city council workshops may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This workshop is also televised live on PSC TV Channel 191 on spectrum cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed at the city Facebook page, website, and YouTube channels. This and previous council workshop video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. And with that, can we get a roll?
Councilmember Campos.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Here.
Torres.
Ms. Torres is excused this evening.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Here.
And Mayor Barajas.
Present.
And if you please rise for the flat sleuth. Thank you for that. And with that, we go on to our next item on the agenda, verbal reports from council members. And we have Councilman Milne.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did attend the Pasco Chamber Lunch today, and we got to hear a great, basically, presentation from Police Chief Ken Rosky. And I guess he'll be presenting that here in a little bit, a couple of weeks or something like that. But it was really good to see the challenges facing Pasco, and yeah, it was a good meeting, so.
Thank you for that. Any other reports from our council members? Hearing none, we'll move on to our first item for discussion, Item A. Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We're pretty much at the midpoint in our planning process for the downtown master plan. And we have a very comprehensive overview tonight, presented by Jeff Rango and Leslie Bane of Framework Consulting. So I think I'll just turn it over to them. The focus will be on what's happened with the planning effort to date, and then a snippet at the end regarding future items. So I'll turn it over to Jeff and Leslie. And Leslie, you're on, at least on this end.
Yeah, thank you. I think I'm here fine. And I think Jeff is here as well.
Yes, I'm here. Ready to get going?
Yeah, Jeff and Leslie, go ahead and tell me when to advance the slides.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Rango. I am the Director of Planning at Framework. We're a planning and urban design firm currently working with the city and the community to create a new master plan for downtown. We're very excited to be here tonight and have the opportunity to present an update to the council and have some discussion at the end. So thank you again for the invite. Next slide, please. So just a brief overview. This is a new downtown master plan for Pasco. It's going to represent a shared community vision, the future of downtown. The plan will be shaped by significant community input, and will build upon local assets and bring together ongoing public investment projects already happening in downtown. The downtown plan will include a summary of existing conditions in downtown, and we've provided a draft of that report to the city, and we're currently responding to some comments on that. And that will be out for public view and comment. It'll include a new vision and goals for downtown, an action plan, so the specific way that we get from the vision to actually implementing the plan, really important part of the process. A plan to track progress on implementing the plan. So some people say the work starts after the plan is adopted, and to some extent, that's true. We love working with communities to find creative ways to implement the plans that we have been hired to produce and would welcome that opportunity. And then a new piece that we'll also be addressing as part of the downtown master plan is working with the community to develop a concept plan for Lewis Street that could move forward. Next slide, please. Yeah, so as the last slide alluded to, there's lots of great stuff happening in downtown, significant investments on the part of the city, including the Lewis Street Overpass, the Lewis Street Streetscape Project, the very exciting renovation of Peanuts Park, and very much looking forward to seeing that ribbon-cutting event happen in March. And then the Transportation System Master Plan, which is the transportation plan for all of downtown, including, or all of the city, including downtown, is also highly related to the work we'll be doing on the master plan. Next slide, please. So in terms of the timeline, there's really three phases in the project. There's existing conditions, then there's the development of the draft plan, and then the legislative review and adoption of the final plan. So at this point, we're sort of right in this stage, kind of finishing out existing conditions and moving into the draft plan stage. And we anticipate having adoption in the summer of 2022. Next slide, please. So I think one of the fundamental questions that we're trying to answer through this process is what is downtown? There's not specifically a clearly defined boundary for downtown. This is a context map that we developed that I think highlights some of the boundaries. So in the smaller inset near Peanuts Park, that outlines the C2 zoning district, which is unique to downtown. The broader red area is the boundary for the downtown PDA. And Leslie has some slides that she's going to speak to in a few moments that starts to get at that question of what is downtown. And so I'll save some of that discussion for those slides. But we certainly would welcome comments from the council if you have specific thoughts about sort of what constitutes downtown. I think regardless of where we end up on the downtown boundary, certainly the area in the C2 zoning district, or what we might call the heart of downtown, certainly will be a focus of the plan. But there are other areas and other strategies that could help benefit downtown. Next slide, please. Next slide. So we'd like to go through the engagement that we've done to date. So towards the end of the farmer's market season, we were fortunate to be able to come and set up a booth and conduct outreach for two consecutive weekends at the farmer's market. We had information about the project, we had some maps, and we had opportunities for people to fill out little cards about what they would like to see in downtown. We've also had an online survey that was posted for a couple of months. We received about 110 or so responses, and I'll share those results with you. And then we had what I would say is a very successful workshop in December with the community at Salon Santa Cruz in downtown. We'll present some of the results for that as well. Next slide, please. So the survey, the first question that we asked is respondents to identify themselves based on these categories. These are not mutually exclusive, so respondents could check more than one box. For example, if they work in downtown and also visit, or any number, any combination of those categories. Total respondents, 112. You'll see a lot of the respondents are visitors to downtown, smaller number of residents and employees. Next slide, please. So one of the first questions, what are your favorite things about downtown Pasco? And the top response at about 75%, no surprise, was the farmer's market. Followed closely behind that were other events and festivals. So I think that kind of matches our perception that the city of Pasco and the community are very successful at holding events, and the farmer's market as well. Cultural identity scored, also scored very high, at just over 50%. And then followed by restaurants and dining, buildings and architecture, and walkable streets. All things very important to a successful downtown. Next slide, please.
Sorry, can you stop?
What topics should be prioritized?
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Rango, Councilman Serrano here. Have you contemplated waiting any of these responses? Like, when I look at this, live, work, own, a shop or property is about 30, just shy of 40%. And those people, obviously, are going to be disproportionately impacted compared to visitors or shoppers in the sense that, you know, if we look at zoning or modifying streetscapes and that sort of thing, they have to live with it, right? Whereas if I'm just down here to shop once a week, twice a week, even if there's inconvenience of loss of parking, if something of that nature, it won't have that level of impact on me. So I guess that's a long way of asking the question. Have you contemplated waiting those who reside more permanently, their responses, or reaching out with a heavier outreach to those individuals?
Yeah, yeah, great question. So I'll take that question in a couple of parts. So first with the survey, I mean, this is not meant to be a statistically valid survey, so waiting in the traditional sense may not be the best way to go. But the reason that we ask this question is because we can actually parse the answers based on how people identified in those categories. So we could break down those questions that I summarized based on responses to any one of these questions. They're called filtered results. We could certainly provide those and take a look at that and see what the differences are. But I think to address your question, the answer is, and I agree with you, is that we would do some state, direct stakeholder outreach to those that have a big stake in downtown, whether that's a property owner or business owner. We actually have some additional resources for the project to be able to do that. We also have a subconsultant, BDS, planning and urban design that's been facilitating some meetings with the downtown PDA as well as doing some stakeholder outreach. And we're planning to do another round of that, both for the master plan in general and for the Lewis Street Streetscape Project. So I think our recommendation would be, as you suggested in your comments, that there be another layer of outreach directly to some of the key stakeholders in downtown. And absolutely, we plan to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you for the comment, good comment. So what topics should be prioritized in downtown? Similar question to the last one. You know, maybe not a surprise, but public safety was the number one response. And I would say that's, you know, something that we hear a lot in the downtown plans that we've been working on in recent years. A lot of cities are dealing with some similar challenges. It's also something I'd like to note was very loud and clear from members that attended the visioning workshop and some of the public comments there. So just wanted to say that we recognize the concerns out there, and we'll look to address those issues to the extent we can in the downtown master plan. The second highest category, and this was something we heard a lot in the outreach that we conducted at the farmer's market, is more things to do downtown. A lot of people we talked to just want kind of that third place or that place to hang out, the coffee shop or restaurants, kind of hangout places in downtown. And that seemed pretty universal regardless of who we spoke to. The next category, also very high, streets, parks, and public spaces. No real surprise there, given the success of the farmer's market in particular. There's also a number of great parks in the area in downtown, great assets. We see some opportunities near term and for capital projects to improve streets and start to bring out the vibrancy that people are looking for. The next category is economic development. Arts and culture scored pretty high. Increased access to mobility. Housing scored pretty low, and urban design at about 35%. We also had another category where people could write in specific responses, and we have those available as well. Next slide, please. Another part of the survey, we asked people to list three words that describe their vision for downtown Pasco, and it creates this word cloud. So the larger the word and the darker the color, the more times that word was keyed in. You can see safe was clearly the number one. Other words that are bigger and in the darker orange color, vibrant, cultural, welcoming, clean, walkable, family-friendly. I mean, these tend to be kind of universal principles for having a successful downtown, right? People have to feel safe, it has to be fun, there has to be things to do. And you can see the other responses sort of stem out from there and sort of build on some of the main responses. Next slide, please. And then three words that describe the biggest challenges. So parking is one. We also heard some input at the visioning workshop, and we've been working with staff to come up with a kind of a near-term plan to collect some additional parking data, homelessness, safety, crime, traffic, rundown. Those were some of the top words, and you can see the others there in the smaller, smaller box. Next slide, please. This is a fun exercise that we've been doing on a couple of our recent projects is asking respondents to upload photos of their favorite places downtown and also examples from other cities. So these were the responses for favorite places downtown. Vieira's Bakery, the farmer's market, City Hall, the specialty kitchen, the taco shop, the beautiful retail storefronts, and the dress shop at Fortin Lewis. So those are definitely assets that we want to highlight in the plan. Next slide, please. And then these are examples that respondents sent in, examples that could offer inspiration. They didn't actually list where the locations that they sent in, so we had to do some sleuthing. There is one in the bottom middle there. We haven't been able to figure out where it is, so if anyone recognizes it, let us know. Walla Walla, Bellingham, Leavenworth, Portland, Burlington, Vermont, which happens to be my hometown, but I promise I didn't send it in. Wenatchee, Vancouver, San Diego, Spokane, the newer development there on the North Bank in Spokane, Coeur d'Alene and their Main Street, Vancouver and Vancouver. Next slide, please. Okay, and you can just advance to the one after that, too. So land use and zoning, land use and zoning are kind of the core of any downtown master plan. So we've taken a look at the zoning, and I think there's a couple of things that stand out to us, and the findings will be on the next slide. But, you know, the first one is that the C2 zoning district really is the only zoning district that's specific to downtown. And we know that the council's made some recent, you know, policy changes there and expanding some of the use limitations that were put in place many years ago. So we see that as a benefit in providing flexibility for downtown property owners and businesses. There's also no parking requirements, which really, as we've heard from our economic subconsultant, and we'll talk about it in a few moments, parking departments can have a big effect on both the economic feasibility of development as well as the physical space that it takes to develop on some of these smaller downtown properties. The rest of the zoning that's within the PDA boundary is zoning that's used elsewhere in the city, so it's really not specific to downtown. So I think one of the things that we have as a recommendation is to develop more zoning, either expand the existing C2 or develop some tailored zoning that is really specific to downtown, and that can support private investment in properties and existing buildings. So that's, I think, really important. In the, like, the general business and the retail business zones, the relatively high parking requirements are, would be very challenging, I think, to me on some of these smaller downtown sites, and certainly would impact the economic feasibility of that development. So that's, I think, something we want to take a look at. Some of the other zoning districts, which are, I think, atypical of a downtown, are lower density residential. That doesn't necessarily mean we have to change the zoning that's there now. We might just have to kind of shift our focus of what we think the downtown master plan should focus on from an area standpoint. So we definitely will have some recommendations there, and I think bring forward a new future land use map that would be adopted as part of the plan. Next slide, please. Yeah, so these are the findings, the first three I already went over. The next one is, I think, the zoning would, and the standards would benefit from some graphics. And so we do have a limited budget to help assist the city with some updates to the zoning and development standards. Maybe the opportunity to bring in some graphics, but that is something that we're doing on most of our zoning projects currently. In the C1 retail district, there's a 15-foot front setback, which is really too narrow for parking unless it's one really wide curb cut. And it also, I think, would have a significant impact on the economic feasibility. So that's one specific thing we'd like to take a look at. And then the sign code. So things like public art and murals are currently regulated under the sign code. So that's something we'd like to take a look at as well and see if there's interest in developing a mural program for downtown. Next slide, please. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie to talk about history, circulation, and streets.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Thank you all for letting us come and talk to you and be part of your city's future. We've really come to love Pasco, and I'm not going to tell anything you don't know about your history, probably. But let me just say, I think it's really an interesting history, and it could really be a rich part of the city's future as well. So one of the things that's interesting, kind of from a planning standpoint, is that there's three grids going on. One responds to the river, one responds to the north, south, east, west cardinal directions of, you know, chopping up the western United States. And the other, interestingly, which is downtown's orientation, is the train. So, you know, on the side there is the original plat of Pasco, which follows the geography, geometry of the train. And so when we're thinking about where is downtown, you know, on the one hand, it's kind of where that geometry takes its genesis from the train, which is one of the things that has made Pasco the place that it is. Okay, it's obviously grown way beyond that. Next slide, please. So, you know, this three-part geometry kind of explains some of the, you know, irregularities. There's both a very strong grid pattern and a strong kind of set of different things going every which way. And, you know, Pasco's interesting in that because of the river and because of the railroad, there are very limited ways that you can move in some direction. So a lot of people are coming across the Cable State Bridge, other people are coming off the freeway, and there's only a few places you can get across the railroad tracks. So that makes an interesting kind of pattern of things. It's interesting where the arterials are and aren't. I think one of the observations we would make is that when you're coming across the bridge, that it's hard to know what this map tells you about where bikes should go, where trucks should go, where downtown is. You know, it's hard to find for people traveling on 10th. And I think sometimes downtown is getting missed, and it's a gem. So one of the questions is where is downtown? And I think one of the ways of looking at that is to say, yes, there is that area that responds to that grid aligned with the railroad. And then you've got this wonderful zone just to the north of the orange line where the PDA's boundaries are that includes City Hall, the Amtrak Station, Volunteer Park, the Franklin County Courthouse, the hospital, the History Museum. And I think that's a really special district. Whether you want to say it's part of downtown, I think it needs to be part of the satellite of the retail historic downtown. And then, obviously, the river is so near yet so far. We like to think about what the assets are of a place and really try to make those stronger and more visible. So, you know, thinking of downtown retail core, what's its relationship to the river? You know, certainly Kennewick has been looking at their riverfront, and the port of Pasco has been looking at the riverfront. The Sacagawea Trail is awesome. So, you know, what ways can we kind of take this wonderful retail core and strengthen it with the surrounding area? So we're kind of maybe a potential historic and civic zone might be a way to think of the area just more downtown. The retail core, there's some areas there that are pretty strong, single-family neighborhoods. What does that mean? You know, those might get a little bit denser, is that part of downtown? But anyway, I think downtown right now is seen as a corridor, which in some ways it is. But I think we want to look at those areas that, those three areas, near the river, the retail core, and then this historic and civic zone that can work together to strengthen the downtown. Okay, next slide. Yeah, so here's this, just bubbles. And it was interesting to look at the future land use map, because you guys have thought about that. And so not just what's there right now, but what is expected to be there in the future. And the bright yellow is very low-density residential. And so if that stays low-density residential, which is fine, maybe we want to think of that as not being so much of the downtown. But the downtown has these corridors that go through and has these more zoned areas around the retail and to the north and south. But we love your comments, so we're putting this out there for your thoughts. Okay, next slide. Okay, so urban design in public realm, something we love. We're so excited to see Peanuts Park, you know, getting finished up and ready to roll out. It's one of the many really special places you have. The historic buildings are amazing. Other cities would love to have that, and you can't recreate that. You either have it or you don't. The Carnegie Library, now the museum, amazing, and it's just north of downtown. The Empire Theater, just is so fun to look at the historic photographs of that. We would love to see that being a new source of vibrancy for downtown. The post office, it's beautiful. So, you know, what kinds of things can we do to take these assets that you have and really make them sing, make them as strong as possible? The activation is huge. So getting Peanuts Park launched, it's just so important that we have a lot of activity going on there, especially with the concerns that people have about, you know, some of the less-than-favorable social behaviors that upset people. We need a lot of positive behaviors to really outweigh the negative behaviors that are causing concern. These are just some, a couple of quotes from your comprehensive plan. We always look to the comp plan because we know that people put a lot of thought and love into these statements. And so the ideas of identical neighborhoods with parks, schools, trees, the Hispanic culture is something I think that, you know, is one part of Pasco that's really unique. Um, you know, is one part of Pasco that's really unique. And I think that's an interesting question, you know, how to play the the Hispanic culture and the broader. Um, uh set of communities that you have uh in the city and the downtown. Okay, next. Of arts and culture, you know, um, that's something that that I've been really focusing on for a past number of years because. You know, much as um, you know, land use is so important, really, people want a vibrant, walkable, exciting place to live with stuff to do. And that starts boiling down to arts and cultures. What do people love about where they live? How does it make it unique? Um, so many cities have become so um homogenized, and what is it that really makes Pasco stand out? What is it that makes you different? What is it that you love? And how can we make that stronger and more visible? So, you know, Jeff mentioned in the sign code, the murals, um, that's something that that so many communities have found. Um, can bring some life, and and we'd like to see that be a little easier in Pasco. Um, there's a lot of it going on. You know, Tappanish is a great example, not too far from you guys. Um, anyway, what kinds of things can we do with the celebration of the culture and the history and the river and? Um, you know, the orchards, all these wonderful things that that make Pasco the place that it is, the trains. Okay, next. Um, streetscape uh is is something that we talked about a lot. It's something that, you know, we've I've spent my career thinking about. And, you know, sidewalks are not something in themselves that people travel to go visit. It's what happens on those sidewalks that really brings them to life. So, you know, we we've we've done an analysis of what you've got going there. Um, some of them are pretty wide, some of them less so. Uh, there's some trees, not a ton. There's some kind of nice over um overhead weather protection, keeps you in the shade. There's some just gorgeous storefronts uh to walk by. There's alleys. Um, so there's a lot of things there to work with. Um, much more than in many, many places, and so you have an enviable set of things to work with. Um, the question is, how can we, with changes to Lewis Street, with some, you know, parklets and other kind of. Um, you know, a variety of of things that can be done pretty easily. How can we help to bring life to the downtown? How can we support the businesses that really are? The generators of so much of the vibrancy of your downtown. Next. So here's some some measurements, and you can see different different widths of sidewalks. And, you know, sometimes, counterintuitively, some of the narrow sidewalks with more stuff going on feel more exciting. Than wider sidewalks with nothing going on that start to feel a little bit bleak. So, um, I think it's a really interesting question in terms of how Lewis Street goes. Um, I think that right immediately, we could start doing some things with the existing space that you have. Um, you can also go beyond the curb into some of the street. We could grab a couple of parking spots and do something pretty fabulous. I think the real question is, how does sidewalks as public space serve your community? Serve the businesses, serve the goals of the downtown? So it's it's not just, you know, the concrete, it's not just the um number of feet and inches. It's really, how can we support activities and comfort and bring people into into town, to downtown, to come and visit and stay there? Okay, next. Yeah, here's some other examples, things that people liked, and, you know, people like a lot of the same things. They like a a connection to storefronts. Um, they like a connection to nature. They like um lighting, like good lighting. Um, parking that makes sense. Uh, good materials, those are all great. So these are things that people liked, and some of them we could do tomorrow. Others take more of um, you know, capital improvement project, but that might be in the works too, so. We want to fire on all cylinders to get your streets supportive of businesses, supportive of communities, supportive of activities. Next. Yeah, so here's, you know, we just took a a sidewalk that you've got there, and I said, well, what could we do if we had ten feet of space for walking and moving? Uh, which would leave us, you know, on some of these streets, four and a half feet. You can actually get tables and chairs in there, so we could try that. We could try it tomorrow. Um, on the other side, we could bring the walking area down to six feet and get ourselves um eight and a half feet of space for more. Sort of uh generous seating. Either one of those things can happen. And, you know, it doesn't have to be an extruded kind of deal either. We could have just six feet for a little bit where there's a restaurant that really wants to have some outdoor seating. So these can be very and should be very tied to the associated land use next to it. Because where these work is where there's a store, a shop, a restaurant, a cafe that wants to use that space. You know, the city doesn't want to be out there, you know, slinging coffee. You you don't want chairs and seating where nobody has anything to do because that can go badly, so. Really, this is uh a very much of an interaction between the private side businesses and the public space that is offered to them to activate. Um, so anyway, those those are con- uh conversations we want to have with you, cuz there's lots of options. Next slide. Okay. So, you know, we know that you're doing transportation planning, and uh we just way I I want to weigh in on this. I mean. The beautiful things about doing a downtown plan is that it tries to bring all the planning together into something that really focuses on a special place. So one of the things that that um I thought was really interesting is that tenth looks like a giant arterial the whole way. And it's it's not. It's um, it's really an arterial that uh as part of the, you know, SR three ninety-seven. Is supposed to bring people off um, take a hard ride after the bridge and go up Ainsworth and then up Oregon. And that's fine on a map. When you're actually there in in the the place itself, it's not clear. And so I think people keep going, and I think that people also miss downtown. And so I know there's been discussion of wayfinding, uh, planning, and I think there can be some really interesting things about. Bringing people to downtown in a really uh beautiful and enticing way. You know, when where Lewis Street hits tenth, it's not a beautiful thing that looks like it leads to downtown. You know, what could we do to help people find? Uh, find the downtown and and spend time there. Okay, next. Yeah, the bike plan, you know, I know bikes have been part of the discussion of Lewis Street. You know, I think we'd like to take just a look at that too. Um, again, same thing with the vehicles, that the the bikes are intended to take a hard right on on uh on Ainsworth and. Uh, use that. They can also use a street, but I think it's very unclear in the field there what bikes are supposed to be doing, what they want to do, what we want them to do. Um, what kinds of bikes might want to go through downtown and go more slowly versus. People that maybe are coming off Sacagawea Trail or something that really is more a through route. And, you know, this is not a a map that makes that much sense unless, you know, you've got a map on you, but. You know, there's just some things that that I think are not clear to a biker and maybe with some wayfinding and. Um, some thoughtfulness, we can make the bikes work better for both the bikers and for the the uses uh in downtown. Next. I'm gonna hand it back to Jeff for the parking. Thanks. Jeff, can you hear us? Jeff?
Mm-hmm.
We may have lost him. Okay. Okay, well, Jeff is our parking expert expert, but I will I will fill in that there um has been parking analysis done.
Quick, can we ask you some questions at this point before we go into the next part?
Absolutely.
Go ahead, um, Councilmember Campos.
Uh, just have a couple of comments uh on your survey. Uh, thanks so much for identifying that murals should be kind of part of our. Cultural identity. It's been something that's been on my mind for a while, and I think it would be really nice to see some really cool, vibrant art in the downtown. Area and just kind of looking at, excited to see what you could bring us. I I think that maybe a couple of different ways I think council could do it. We could either kick it down to. Planning and see what they think, or again, maybe looking at ordinance. Some thoughts I had is maybe having a separate code, but then again, they're possibly proposing having a separate mural commission, so. Either way, just kind of interesting to see what comes out of that. Um, looking at the survey some more, you know, public safety being such a big part of what the survey said. And looking at streets, parks, and public spaces, I kind of think those go hand in hand because. Uh, parking is such a big issue. You got a lot of vehicle use on that arterial, and, you know, I think that leads to public safety. You mentioned a little bit about lighting, and I'm gonna throw a lot here, but this is mostly just to throw out. And I I think it's really important, at least in our alleyways, you know, as you walk down there at night, it's fairly. I mean, there's not a lot of light pollution, and I think if we added lights to the alleyways, I think that would also add to the public safety and may deter. You know, some of the homelessness in there. I know that me personally have added lights to my alleyway, and I I've I've cut down a lot of foot traffic that shouldn't be in my. Alleyway. Um. Uh, that kind of basically comes down to the parts of my comments. I guess, go back into the parking. I'd be interested to see what you guys propose as far as some of your solutions. You know, kind of comparing apples to apples. If, you know, we're we're approaching. Close to what Spokane should be. You know, Spokane manages some of their downtown parking with, you know, paid parking, and and I'm not necessarily super favorite of that, but again. If you're looking at us being there in a few years, it might be worthwhile to say, you know, this is a an option here. But also, we have some businesses in the downtown area that also have uh co-located housing. And it, I'd be curious to see if there is any availability for a dedicated, like tenant parking. Cuz right now that doesn't exist, and and there's a lot of traffic that just kind of backlogs in the downtown Pasco area. Uh, got an email last week, uh, Tom Scrambois. He pointed out a couple of key key things. I think Dave's working on trying to come up solutions, so I'm. Just interested to see if we're all kind of on the same page there. Um. I think that covers.
Thank you, Councilmember Campos. Any further comments or questions before we proceed? Looks like none. Oh, Councilwoman Zerono?
Yeah, I was a little hesitant cuz it sounded like Jeff was on, but um although that, I really love that idea. I think we should empower the Arts Commission. I mean, we've. Created them, so let's let's see if they can maybe work with staff to create the ordinance. Um, anytime we can empower our commission to bring us something media, let's do that. Um, but this question was for Ms. Bain. I noticed you talked about the historical uh features. And typically, if we have a a historical or a historically designated part of a city. It comes with certain regulations and responsibilities. Is that something that you're intending um to create a historic district? Um, I mean, I I'd love to see that because that would allow us to not only preserve, but also kind of bring back to life some of these buildings. And use them as they were initially intended. Um, so again, I don't know if that was just throwing out the concept of a historic area or actually try to get one designated. Do you have some thoughts on that?
I I I sure do. Thanks, thanks for that question. Um, yeah, and I've spoken to folks at the the History Museum. I spent a a great afternoon up there talking with them. Um, so I would say there's a couple of of kinds of historic districts at least. One has a capital H and one, I would say, has a small h. So there are some historic districts that require um, you know, certification. They have to meet criteria. They'll get you tax breaks, and there's also some restrictions on what you can do with the property. So, um, and I think there's been a little bit of that work done up um just north of the downtown. Um, and there's definitely some historic property reports. Um, so there's work that you guys have already done on that. Um, I am not certain that you meet all the criteria for the capital H historic district. But a i- if we can call a small H historic district is something we could make ourselves and call it whatever we want. And and um shape it however we want. Um, that doesn't have the restrictions or the tax benefits. Um, so I think I think there's different ways to approach it. Um, I think that you've got some really interesting stuff uh around the History Museum. That and and that courthouse is just gorgeous. So, um, I think there is a real possibility of doing something there that could be kind of extraordinary. And I know it's it's a tourism thing already. I know the folks, you know, that come off the the paddle wheel, you know, show up at the museum and. And I think, and it's it's a it's a, you've got some diamonds there that I think you could connect the dots and make that a district that was very strong. So, um, you know, certainly you've got the train and the park, so there's a lot to work with. So I think it would be a question of whether you want to do the more official designation so people can get some tax credits. And then finding out whether you um meet the criteria to do that for either federal, state, or local um. Uh, nomination as historic properties or historic district. So, um, certainly could could, you know, start that discussion. Um, and I know it's been something that's been talked about before. So, anyway, I I love the idea of whether it's it's a formal or more informal kind of approach to it, but. You've got the the fabric to work with, and I think recognizing that and honoring it could strengthen it.
Thank you for that, and we have one more comment from um Councilman Campos, and then uh Deputy Mayor um Maloney.
This will be ultra quick. Speaking of quilt work, I know where your mystery photo is from. It's from the Sisters Outdoor Quilt Show in Ash, Oregon. Or Sisters, Oregon, I'm sorry.
I think you're that.
Super sleuth, hard at work.
Nice.
The collective mind is a beautiful thing.
Yeah, so my, I'll I'll only make one con- or question at this point in time, and it's that's really regards to the zoning. I think when you look at that zoning map and and really, I really appreciate the breaking that. Um, the the area and especially the the way that the city and the streets are oriented in this area. Um, and how it aligns to various different components, either the railroad or, you know, um, or the river or the or north, south, east, west. Uh, any of those, I think that was really interesting, and um. Um, I I I think when you look at the zoning map and what uses are currently being. Be here, I think that we really do need to take a us a hard look at how do we make that much more uniform, um, much more effective. Right now it's a hodgepodge. I mean, I didn't I didn't know, and um, you know, I guess shame on me for not for not actually knowing this. But that um, that building that kind of um reddish building right across from the farmer's market um to the south. The fact that that is not in the C two, it is not part of C two zoning um is i- is surprising to me. And that right there means that it falls into a different set of parking restrictions, uses, um, the entire sh- the entire landscape with that building can be used for, and also. Would it be restricted to shifts dramatically in that case. So when you look at certain aspects like that, it it, you know, I know these things have changed organically over time. And I really look forward to getting our zoning in one, one direction so that we really know. When you're in downtown, here's what you're doing, here's what rules apply to you, so business owners don't come in and get surprised. And get surprised again, and then talk to the city, and the city tells them, well, you can't do this. And they say, well, my neighbor can do this. Well, your neighbor's in a different zone. Well, that doesn't necessarily matter to a business owner who's just, you know, literally right next door to someone, so. Um, anyways, really appreciate that, bringing that to light, and uh very interested in how we can make that uniform and consistent and uh. And meet more of a business's needs, so thanks.
Okay. Um, my apologies, earlier I got uh had an internet issuing and got kicked off, so I'm I'm back now and uh ready to uh talk about parking, so. Just in the way of our background, uh, actually downtown and and neighborhood parking uh studies are one of our core practice areas, so I've. Led several uh downtown parking studies, um, so we're very familiar with the range of solutions. Um, this map is uh shows the data that was collected by Transpo. Uh, it gives us a snapshot, but like most parking studies, it's a a limited point in time. Uh, for the days that they collected, the two days, um, this shows the peak uh parking occupancy on Saturday. When the farmer's market was was going, and you can see, you know, other than a few blocks in red along Lewis. Um, and some of the side streets, there's a lot of green there, so a- at least when this was uh collected, there was quite a bit of parking. Uh, availability. Uh, we did here at the Visioning Workshop, again, uh, some concerns around parking availability, so. We're working with staff to find a cost-effective way to uh collect more data and also refine. Uh, some of the data that we're collecting to answer some key questions. Um, and to some of the comments earlier about parking. Uh, there should be a a convenient and a right place for every downtown user to park, whether you live downtown, whether you're. An employee needing to park all day, whether you're a visitor. Where the problems arise is where there is no clear boundaries of where people are gonna park, and you get. of where people are going to park and you get conflicts, right? So for example, employees could be parking right in front of their businesses and taking up parking for customers or similar similarly for residents. And that's all natural and that could just really be because they haven't been provided clear options. So in terms of management options, you know, there's ways to sort of tailor your time limits or your permit program if you were to develop one to specifically target specific users. So for example, if you're an employee, it would be great if you were parking on a street where there was less retail or visitor demand or even better in an off street, in an off street lot that had availability. So and then, you know, maybe some blocks have four hour parking or all day parking or all day parking by permit holders and other blocks are, you know, two hour parking for visitors. So I think figuring out where you want people to park, collecting more data to give us the insights for how to tailor those management strategies. I think taking that approach, we should be able to solve some of the some of the issues happening in downtown. I would also say that it's very, very common. For example, I worked on downtown Wenatchee's parking study. It's very common for the perceptions to sometimes not match the the actual data. So I understand the desire to collect more data, but we also have to make data, we have to make sure that we're making data driven decisions. In Wenatchee, for example, I think when we collected on their Saturday market at Pibus, you know, we were told by the community how packed parking is in downtown and we need to come down. And we did and we collected data and it was something like thirty seven percent occupied. There were literally thousands of parking spaces. Were they in the ideal location where people wanted to to use them to go to the farmer's market or other destinations? Maybe not, but there still was an abundance of parking availability in that case. So anyways, we know it's an important issue and we'll come up with some strategies in the plan that I think will be effective. Next slide, please. Okay, so now we're going to go through the market analysis and downtown management and we have Echo Northwest on our team as a sub consultant to leave the economic analysis. And this map shows the the market areas that they analyze. So the greater downtown Pasco area, which is kind of a a larger area than we've shown on the map and then in the pink area is sort of the secondary market. And they do it this way so that they can kind of compare the characteristics in the greater downtown Pasco area to the secondary market area. I would also say that we've gotten some comments both from the public at the visioning workshop and from city staff and reviewing the existing conditions report. So we're going to be confirming some of our assumptions like around rents and vacancies and things like that. We don't expect that that will necessarily change our findings, but we do want to make sure we're capturing it correctly. So with that said, we looked at the feasibility for a range of of different types of of uses and development ranging from new construction to adaptive reuse. And for the purposes of analysis, they assumed a two-story twenty thousand square foot building. Next slide, please. Yeah, so this chart is an interesting one. It basically shows what we call development feasibility. So can you develop a new building or do adaptive reuse of an existing building for these specific uses which have different levels of rents associated with them? So we'll just start at the top. Office. So in the dark brown bar over on the right hand side, that would represent new construction and then the lighter bar would represent adaptive reuse. And then over on the left hand side of the chart, the lighter blue bar is the rent in the secondary market. So the bigger area and the darker blue bar is greater downtown Pasco rents, which are a little bit higher. And so in order for a project to be feasible, the one of the blue bars would have to be within either the dark, the darker brown bar for new construction on the right or the lighter one for that to be feasible. And you can see if you look down all four of the uses that we looked at, office, multifamily, retail and industrial flex, the rents that we would get in either market area would not cover the cost for either adaptive reuse or new construction. So I think that kind of tells the story of of why downtown has not seen a lot of new construction recently. If you look down at the bottom for industrial flex, you can see that's where the bars are the closest, right? So for example, in the greater downtown Pasco area, the darker blue bar is about eight dollars rent per square foot. You would need to get up to ten to make the industrial flex space work. So there is the possibility to close the gap through some of the strategies of the plan, but in some cases that gap is fairly large, particularly for new construction. That doesn't mean that nothing can happen development wise. There are certain entities and folks that do development based on a different set of of values or goals. Again, not maybe going to see large scale development under those parameters, but we do see it happen in downtown. So the other thing that I would also emphasize is I think some of the zoning and development standard recommendations could be important in starting to close that gap, particularly around parking regulations. And then I think a goal of any, you know, capital project or or, you know, other public improvement project is trying to incentivize private sector investment. So certainly the park, Peanuts Park is an example of that, Lewis Street, the Overpass, you know, all of those, I think, will start to hopefully contribute to incentivizing private sector investment. You also have the downtown PEA, which is a great resource and and could take a more active role in in development downtown. Next slide, please. So these are the key findings. Again, the top one I think is the headline, which is current market rents, both in greater downtown Pasco and the secondary market area, would not support new construction or adaptive reuse for either office, multifamily, retail or industrial flex. But again, industrial flex is the closest currently. There's a recommendation to kind of focus on tenant improvements, help repurpose old commercial space into usable space. And additions could be another way also to see private sector investment where new construction is is less feasible. Next slide, please. And then downtown management is is really important as well. So obviously the physical improvement, your zoning, your policies, your capital improvement program, all very important, but the management acts aspect is is also really critical. And Pasco is fortunate to have a tool that not a lot of downtowns we work with have, and that is the downtown PDA. And that downtown PDA is also serving as your main street organization. And there's this sort of distinct roles for those. So we have those in this chart here. Just recognizing that sort of both sides of the chart are really important and valuable for downtown. We have BDS again, as a sub consultant that's been facilitating some meetings and will be developing recommendations for how to continue improving downtown management and be a partner with the city and with the private sector. It takes really all three of those groups to to have a really successful downtown. So for example, some of the public space improvements that Leslie was talking about, activation and programming, putting seating out, helping facilitate private sector businesses, having a presence on sidewalks and in public spaces, that could be something that the PDA and the main street organization would be well suited to support. Next slide. So that's the conclusion of our presentation. Would be happy to take additional comments. And again, thanks for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. We really look forward to continuing work on the plan and continuing to do outreach with the community and bringing the plan forward here in in a matter of a few months. So thanks.
Mr. Adango and Ms. Bain, thank you so much for your presentation. Do we have any more comments or questions from our council members regarding this presentation? Looks like we don't. Again, actually, yes, we do. Mayor Potem Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. Yeah, just one, one follow up question is what was, what was the DPDAs role or downtown Pasco Development Authority's role in the formation of the work to date?
Well, we certainly interacted with them when we were at the farmer's market and they helped coordinate with that. And then Brian Scott from BDS has been facilitating some of the board meetings with them. So he's been very involved with their, with their sort of retreat and and management meetings. And we will continue to engage with them as we move through the plans. But I would say they've been pretty active to date, primarily through BDS and their work with the organization.
All right, thank you. And so in terms of where we're going from here, so we we see, we'll see a, an actual draft plan coming up pretty soon. Is that, do I understand that correctly for, is the next step from slide four?
Yes, yes, it is with the small caveat that we will be doing a workshop. We haven't scheduled it yet, but we're thinking of doing a workshop for the Lewis Street Streetscape project and some stakeholder outreach that I had mentioned earlier in March. And then we would have the plan a little bit later in spring for adoption in the summer.
Thank you. So one of the questions I had, I guess from from the community workshop at Salon Santa Cruz, I I I think it was very clear that one of, of course, a lot of downtown businesses are very concerned about our homeless population that's downtown, how that's affecting safety and cleanliness of downtown and such. And so I know that was a big topic and I I know I had an opportunity to speak with, with, with some of the the team, folks from your team about this very topic as well, that this is a very common issue. I don't really see anything addressing that in any meaningful form as part of this in spite of the fact that, you know, safety and homelessness were some of the key items that from the online survey and in person conversations. So what are your thoughts of that as to how that fits in with the downtown planning?
Yeah, yeah, good question. So I think there are a couple of comments I'd like to make there. One is this is the downtown plan and it's really meant to address downtown in a holistic manner, right? So we're going to touch on issues like parking, maybe housing, bikes, but there are also specific plans that address those issues and we're not necessarily going to supersede those per se. There's a housing action plan that the city is embarking on now, which is also related to those issues as well. So I think there are a couple of really key areas that the downtown plan can help to address those issues. One is through the public outreach process, right? So documenting everything that we heard from folks and the the people that attended the visioning workshop were very vocal about this issue. We we discussed it at length, you know, after the formal part of the meeting and I expect we'll be reaching back out of that, out to them for some direct stakeholder outreach about that. So that's one thing that I think is is quite tangible. The next is land use issues. So downtown plan, as we just went through with zoning, can address a myriad of things related to land use. So if there are land use issues related to service providers or things like that, there could be some standards such as whether they can be aggregated or co-located or which zones are appropriate. Those are all issues that are very appropriate for for the downtown plan.
I have a couple of things to say to, are you done, Jeff?
You can, you can go and I'll finish up after, Jeff.
Okay. You know, Pasco is hardly unique in this being a problem right now. And a lot of these are part of the fallout of large social, economic, national, global problems. So you are not unique in that and no one, well, there's very few people that have have solved this. But I think one of the things that we've found is that positive activities are really, really important. So if we can outweigh some of the negative behavior with positive activities, it's it's going to be one of the best things that that can we can do. So one of the things that we really want to help you have happen is when Peanuts Park, for instance, opens that right off the bat, there are activities going on there. There are positive activities. There are people there monitoring it. Maybe they're selling coffee. We do a lot of that kind of activation work. We're passionate about it, but I think that's one of your best hopes to mitigating some of the the bad behavior. And so, you know, I think you, you need to kind of go at it from both ends with carrots and sticks. You know, maybe there are particular things like the Thunderbird Hotel kept coming up as well. So maybe there are certain things that can be dealt with on the city side, but I think activity is something we would really like to help support both physically and from a management point of view for your downtown.
Yep. Thank you, Leslie. So Leslie hit on the third, the third point, which is again, the activation and the programming piece that's really important. I think, you know, the farmer's market is a great example. People come from all over. It's very active. People feel safe. It's fun. You obviously can't recreate the, perhaps the level of activity that happens at the farmer's market on a daily basis, but we certainly can get much closer. And I think as Leslie described, that can really help with a feeling of safety and security and vibrancy in downtown.
All right. Appreciate those answers and I do absolutely understand this is just one piece of the puzzle and it fits into a number of things the city's working on. Obviously, we've, we've come a long ways in developing master plans over the last four or five years and it's really paying dividends. And so I'm excited for this to integrate with that. And I guess there's one, one final question is, and this kind of gets back to that three different, you know, the the ovals of of areas or in the areas surrounding downtown. And that's, obviously, the Port of Pasco is doing a significant amount of work. We're talking about, you know, really activating some of the riverfront properties and such. Can you speak at all as to how your efforts are tying into those or any recommendations you might have? Will those be addressed in there? Not asking necessarily for you to to give me the spoiler of of what, what the right answer is, but how does that fit into the picture?
Yeah, I'll take that one. Yes, and and we did speak to the port one, one time when we were in town to to kind of figure out what they were up to. It's a great development. It's great that people are are taking the riverfront and seeing that as an asset. I think for downtown, there's sort of so near yet so far kind of issue going on. And I think it's probably going to take some time to have those things kind of grow together. But I think there's some things that could happen really immediately to help people be able to find the river without doing too much to just make it clear through some, some physical things, through some wayfinding that the river is there, that the Sagittarius Trail is there, so that, you know, the, the people biking and jogging and so on can find the downtown. It's not that far away. It can start to have some of the activities that the port is doing be a benefit rather than a, you know, competitor. I think it's important for the downtown to work together with that so that that kind of starts to glue together over time. But, you know, the, the river is is a wonderful amenity. It's a beautiful, beautiful place and getting there is hard right now. And I think trying to to mine that gap would be a worthy effort.
All right. Thank you very much.
Again, Ms. Bain and Mr. Adango, thank you so much. Oh, one last question.
It's not really a question. I just, I just wanted to make a comment with Mr. Campos is talking about the the light issue. Years ago, the City of Pasco, some of the council members and the former mayor had gone down to Denver and we saw a street where it was a lot of industrial lighting, but it was string lighting. It went over and it really brightened up the place. And I thought it looked very inviting and then it also, I think, cut down on homelessness because homelessness, when they're sleeping in front of stores, they don't want to be super bright. It actually does bother them quite a lot. So I know I've always been an advocate since I've been on council, doing something similar. And I'd just like to reiterate, we have had discussions about it. I don't know if it ever happened, but I do think it's a great idea to have more lighting in the downtown and make it more inviting, friendly place. And it's still my thoughts to say that if we can move forward on some kind of bigger lighting and just make it fun, I would, I would love to see that.
Thank you for your comments.
And I believe that was Laramie Square.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other comments from our council members? Looks like there are none. Thank you again for your presentation and thank you for the conversation on this very important topic for City of Pasco. And with that, we will move on to item B, the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, 2021 Annual Report. Director White, do you have some comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I know tonight we have with us Gabrielle Portugal, the Downtown Pasco Development Authority, DPDAs Board Chair, and Oscar Martinez, the DPD A Board Chair, and Oscar Martinez, the interim Executive Director. And they're here to give us the annual report and to touch upon some of the activities that the DPD A will be involved with this coming year.
Thank you for that.
Good evening, Mr. Portugal.
Now it's on. Good evening, city council members, honorable mayor and city staff. My name, like you say, Gabriel Portugal, I'm the Chair for the DPD A. And I'd like to introduce a few of our members, they're here. And I'd like to introduce our new Secretary for this year, Kylie Grimes. New board member, Thomas Grandbois, and new board member, Alex Estrada. They're here to show us some support. And, you know, some of you already know Oscar Martinez, he's our Interim Director. Previously, he was the Farmer's Market Manager. And so he's been with us for a couple of years. And so wanted to just give you the, a little bit of what our mission is. So basically, our mission of the DPD A is to strengthen and develop the downtown Pasco. And the key, the keywords are here, a center for culture and community spirit. That's the catch for this. So we are always looking at City of Pasco being one of the most multicultural cities of the tri-cities. And I attended a workshop where, I forget the name of the presenter, that he said that we are possibly one of the most multicultural areas in the United States, where we have really multicultural from different folks that come from all over the world. So, so the spirit and, and culture, that's the things that we want to inspire in everything that we do. Our vision is to provide or to create a family-friendly experience. We want customers to come more than once, to feel like this is really a place they want to come back. And I'm sure all the business folks that I have visited, they say the same. We want business to blossom. So the, some of the things that, that really bring to my involvement in, in the DPD A is the, the words for culture and a family experience. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor Barajas and Councilman Maloney and Councilman Milney, you attended the cultural night that we put together. In two hours, we had Filipino, we had Scottish, we had Native America and the traditional Mexican folkloric, all in two hours. And not only to dance and entertainment, but also to explain the significance of the dances. If you, if you watch a dancing from Mexico, from Native America, from the Scottish, you always wonder what, what is the meaning of the dance? So there, at that cultural night, they have the opportunity to explain to us what is the significance? Because we, we believe that is a cross-cultural building strategy that we're doing. So the people's eyes brighten up and say, I never seen this before, where they go from one culture to another culture in a snap of, of fingers. And I'm sure, I have a video that I will share with the clerk and then later, if you want to see that, it's a two-minute video that shows you what I'm talking about. Because cultural night is, is the, when we invite folks to come and explain and come together and learn from each other. Basically, that's, that's what it is. So our mission addresses also the current local conditions that were explained with the partner and the master plan explanation that was so well done. And these local conditions in the Main Street program, the Washington State, Washington Main Street program, those are the goals that they, we put together with them. My involvement with the city has been about 30 years. I've been in the planning commission, I've been, I've been with the, an advisor for the Chief of Police for like four different chiefs. And anyway, so my love for this city is just to make it a city where we can shake the, what was, in the survey, it came where City of Pasco is more like the ugly duckling. And it's been like that for many, many years and it's changing. The development in the West Side, the changes that were, that are happening now show that we are not the ugly duckling anymore in the City of Pasco. We're really proud of our city and the stigma, we want to erase that. So Oscar is going to go down to numbers as to what, where we are with the PSK, excuse me, the, the Pasco Specialty Kitchen and the Farmer's Market and some of the other areas. So Oscar is an Interim Director and we are going to be looking for a new director. We are looking for a new director and he is eligible to apply as well. So Oscar, take it over.
Hello, my name is Oscar Martinez. I'm the Interim Director of the Downtown Pasco Development Authority. Thank you, council members, for allowing me to present today our annual report from last year. All the activities that we worked on last year and the upcoming activities that we have for 2022. The City of Pasco uses a Main Street program to contribute funds to the DPD A. Those funds are to a sum of $100,000. And out of those funds, the City of Pasco also receives a 75% tax credit in return. The DPD is an organization that was created to revitalize the downtown Pasco section as well as manage the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, known as the PSK, and the Pasco Farmer Market. And also three, two to three big events that we've put on throughout the year, which is Cinco de Mayo, the Fire Fest Festival and Kids Day at the Market. The way we, the way we help to revitalize downtown Pasco is through our, through our events by community and foot traffic, by, by bringing foot traffic to downtown for the downtown businesses. We also have the Pasco Specialty Kitchen, where we facilitate Brothers Cheesesteak and a new upcoming member, which is going to be a lot of hottest style Mexican food, which as the name says, it's going to be Mexican food. We also host Food Truck Friday, typically hosted in the Peanuts Park. We had two posters from our previous event from last year, which is Cinco de Mayo. Last year, we did at the Raza, the Main Street. We extended the events to a couple of different weeks due to COVID, so we would never have a big gathering. And then we can move to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen. The Pasco Specialty Kitchen is broken down into three different categories, which are storage fees, the client rental, which is the restaurant and businesses that use the kitchen, and the CDBG funds, which are reimbursement funds. So we got to spend the money first, we receive the money as well. Last year, we were able to get a new business into the kitchen and create a total of 40 new jobs available to the LMI individuals. At the end, we ended up with 24 clients. Our expenses came out to $197,000 and our total revenue was 133. That is without counting the quarter for reimbursement fund from CDBG. We're still working on that at the moment. And we should have the actual numbers, I want to say in about two weeks. Sorry. The Pasco Farmer Market is actually owned by the city and managed by the DPD A. With the renovation that took place in 2021, we had to move our market outside to the street, which started to affect our customers and our vendors as well. A lot of the vendors were actually looking forward to the renovation. They're very happy to come into the season of 2022 with a brand, brand new renovated space. Due to construction, there was added $10,000 in additional expenses that we weren't planning on that the city and DPD are currently working in some kind of reimbursement for that. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. The Pasco Farmer Market has been operating for 33 years. This will be the 34th year that it will be operating. When it began, it was one of the biggest markets in this side of this, this side of the mountains, considering we have the Seattle Market over in Seattle. We had a peak season of 45 vendors due to limited spacing because we were out in the street. We were able to recruit 17 November to the market and were able to get $60,000 worth of COVID-related funds. We collected $21,000 in vendor fees. And for the peak season in '19 was 75 vendors inside of the pavilions, inside of the Peanuts Park area. So this year, with the new renovation, we're looking to add another 25 vendors to that. So at the end of 2022, we would love to have 100 vendors under that pavilion. Season, for the season of '21, we were also able to, our vendors were able to generate an additional $212,000 in their funding throughout the mark, throughout the vendors together, and that was in the total sales. We reimbursed $20,000 through the SNAP program. The SNAP program is a program funded by the state, which is to help individuals that are low, low income with call DBT and food stamps. With that SNAP program also comes a SNAP match program, which is also funded by the state, which allows us to match any individual that brings food stamps in for the amount that they want to buy at the market. Then we move over to the, and I just wanted to introduce a few market vendors. We do, we have TNSH, you see the first picture, Shabber Farms, they've both have been with the market for a little over six years. At Tojitos Maria, Garibros Farm, Tojitos Maria, one of the new vendors that we actually recruited this year. So we were able to have at the market actual grilled corn and fresh fruit, ready to eat right in there, something that hasn't been available before. We're these pepper blimes and we also partnered up with the Ben Franklin Head Start to try to get them into so they can recruit more, more individuals for the program because they were saying they were running a little low on students. Then we're to the Cinco de Mayo, one of the events that we put together and managed for the City of Pasco. Last year, we had to break it down to the Terraza de Pasco, which was broken down into five different events. Every, every single Saturday after the market, we would have a small event, a small gathering, no more than 500 people would be there. We had vaccinations on site, we had every sanitizing station out there that we could. We also brought in Life Food Chaliva for the first time in Pasco history. That actually came out on the very last day of our event, which was May 30th, I want to say. And it brought in about a good crowd of 1,000 people. It got a really good feeling and it really activated our community quite a bit. A lot of the individuals were really excited to have that there. It was something that they had in seeds to their childhood, so they were super excited about that. We also coordinated a live streaming concert through Qualima that we were able to project here in downtown Pasco with a huge monitor screen that we had out there at the event. A lot of people were gathered around, we put chairs with a distance of six feet in between each chair and every single chair was occupied that day, which we were very proud of. Like I mentioned, we did have vaccination clinic on site and we actually had them all at the market all the way until June. And then once June came, we actually had to go to every, once a month, just because of how they were working. And then just a few pictures from the event. The first one you have is a wrestler actually jumping off of the ring. And then the second one, you have him actually getting somebody. The third one, you have our poster and our banner that we had out there to kind of represent what we were doing and while we were closing the street down. And that was the official poster that we had. Our DPD financials. Sorry, I kind of skipped one, I'm just going to go back. Due with the event, we were also supposed to have a Fire Foods Festival. The reason why we couldn't was because we did have a brief conversation with the Health Department. At that time, the cases were up to 1,500 a week, so they advised us not to have it. It may be postponed until later on during the year. The problem with that is the Fire Foods Festival takes place in September. Anything after September gets a little cold to have any big events outdoors. So we have postponed it to the 2022 season. Our DPD financials and the number that you see is actually not the correct number. Our correct number was actually negative $114. We were in the red, but due to, with previous years, we're actually in the red a lot better than we have been before. So that means that the DPD is actually getting way better at how the money is being managed and how the events are being managed.
Sorry, could I just get a clarification on that? Or is it, are you saying that the slide here is not reflective of what you?
Yes. I had a.
There's, there's an error on this slide?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I just.
Sorry.
Wanted to make sure I fully understood that, thank you.
Correct. Throughout the year, the DPD A received contribution, which that is including $100,000 from the city and other organizations, $256,000. A total of, whoa, oh, a grant we received, a total of $356,000 as well. Of sponsorships for events, we received a total of $40,000 and that's only for the Cinco de Mayo event, since we never did the Fire Foods last year. Moving forward, we do plan on having more retreats to help our board members and our staff as well kind of move, move forward in the right direction that the city would like us to move. Rebuilding the relationship with the city that I know has been kind of knocked down for a couple of years. Utilizing our newly renovated Peanuts Park to create more events throughout the year for, for the downtown community to benefit from. This is including a little, a few more summer events, because right now we only have two. So I'm creating something in June, maybe something in July as well. We're also going to tie that in with the, with the, with the Farmer Market, to add a little more life to it. And then, right here, so we move over to the funding agreement, which I don't. Yeah, and any questions? So for the funding agreement, we are asking for a few more extra funds.
Let me add something.
Oh, sorry.
So just to share a little bit of the Cinco de Mayo that Oscar mentioned. One of the challenges to, with Cinco de Mayo is to make it multicultural. Many folks think that Cinco de Mayo is only for Mexicans. And this is why we're trying to be more inclusive. I'm one of the founders of Cinco de Mayo and I'm so happy and thankful the city took this as a project for the city. But back in the old days, we got, gathered a few folks and just say, hey, let's get together because we need some kind of cultural, cross-cultural activities that we can do so that people can come together and learn from each other. That's how Cinco de Mayo started. We didn't have no sponsors, no nothing, anything, just, just volunteers. We got together and put an event and then after that, another one and pretty soon it was like so well, to a point that it got the largest parade in, in, in the state, I was told, I don't know. So, but the point is that Cinco de Mayo, we try to say to folks is this. Because of the French invading Mexico and Mexico was able to stop the French, the French were not able to influence the outcome of the civil war, whether it's good or bad. Imagine a different outcome for the civil war, imagine extending the civil war longer. So what, what we say is that everyone has the right, everyone should celebrate Cinco de Mayo because it, 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 it impacted all of us because of what happened back in 1862 and 63. So Cinco de Mayo is for everybody to celebrate that we were able to stop the French from intervening the outcome of the civil war. And so when we do these activities where we involve different cultures, it's because of that we want to make it so, it's cross-cultural. And by inviting Filipinos, Scottish, African-American, Native American, you can see the blend of so many different cultures and there are a lot of more. There are Russians, there are different other cultures, Italians. There, there's so many different groups that came to the United States looking for the, the, the American dream. And so we want to make sure that this is an opportunity, Cinco de Mayo is an opportunity for all of us to come together. I, I don't want to make it too long, but that's, I just wanted to elaborate on that.
And then I'll take it over. The funding agreement that was for 2021, we did accomplish a lot of the tasks that we were asked to do. There was a few tasks that we were not able to complete due to the funding that we had for 2021. So this year, I am requesting. So this year I am requesting a few more additional dollars. Uh. The reason we have my request, it would allow us to complete the task that we were supposed to complete in twenty-one moving forward to twenty twenty-two. Uh, this will also offset, offset the cost of the kitchen due to the fact that. The DPD did not apply to the, uh, to the CDBG funding, so we will not have that funding available. That was an extra sixty-four thousand dollars that we had available in the year of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one that will not be available this coming year. Uh, this will also help with the seven percent inflation rate that happened, that took place in the whole year of twenty twenty-one. Uh, it will allow us to promote, to put more money into promotions of the downtown businesses, including our Pasco specialty kitchen and our farmer's market. Uh, it will also help us develop a transitional program for our current kitchen clients. That is one of the biggest things that we have with the kitchen clients. Uh, the Pasco specialty kitchen currently does not have a program to where they can actually either transition to a brick and mortar or a food truck that they would like. Once their business has been big enough. So that, that'll be a pro- a program that we're looking to develop. And that was, any questions?
We have several questions. Um, I'll reserve my comments towards the end. Uh, first we have, uh. Did not see the light turned on first, so Councilman Melon and then after you, um, Councilman Gumples.
Right, well, thank you, uh, Oscar Martinez. We do appreciate it. Very good, uh, presentation. And, um. I don't know if you know, but in the past, the city council has gone down, talked to different businesses. You know, we are very concerned with, um. The downtown, uh, obviously we want the DPD to do well. And I know we got, talking to different people, we always got high marks on the farmer's market and especially the kitchen, it always seemed to be great things. We did enjoy it too of that as well. Um, I know one thing that we did kind of see that was a little disturbing was the. There didn't seem to be a lot of interaction between the DPD and a lot of the business owners from what we were hearing and it seemed like the LBA had kind of. Jumped in there and, and got some and then there seemed to be kind of a conflict. What, uh, is your guys' plan to? Kind of bridge the gap and have you worked with the LBA? Have you tried to, you know, see if we could all get along for the betterment of Pasco? It sometimes. As a councilman, it seemed like there was two competing organizations in the downtown. And, uh, I'd like to know what your thoughts are and if you have any plans to try to bridge the gaps or, um. Uh, I'd love to hear what you have to say.
Good question. Um, yes, um, eh, unfortunately, uh, we had, um. Sometimes not very positive e- e- exchanges. Our previous director was even, uh, uh, attending the meetings of the LBA. And it got to the point where, um, eh, things didn't work out for him and, and, and the leadership of the LBA. Um, eh, it's been like a competition where he should not be. We are not membership driven. DPD is not membership driven. But some, for some reason, um, there's also the perception that we are the city. Like they come to us, hey, my, my, uh, uh, next to my business is real dirty, you know. You know, tell the city that to come and clean it and, and they expect us to, to, to take care of things like that and it was. That's not our business. That's not our job to clean the streets, you know? So, um, there's a perception that, um, that we wanna, we want clarity and we asked this to, to the city before. That we want clarity where it's a statement from the city saying, you know, DPD is not the city so that they can come to you. For things that are related to the city. And, and, uh, so this friction with LBA is because. Um, there's that misunderstanding and then there were some funds that, that were given, um, to us. That our previous director was in charge of this, of, um, sort of like guiding those applications. We really didn't. He did not approve or, 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 or not, or deny any of the applications, but the perception was that, that we did. And so some got so much and some others didn't. And they thought that we decided on those amounts and then again, it's that's. Miscommunication, misinformation. And so that created also, uh, a, an, a, a, um, sort of like a, like a. Um, more, um, fuel for this disagreement, this, uh, um, uh. Sort of like a barrier for working together to a point. And, uh, you know, um, the LBA has its own goals. The LBA was formed after they, you know, after they could not work out with the chamber, uh, the, the Tri-City Spanish Chamber, you know, the leadership. In fact, that's where they collided. And so that's another story. So they came out building, uh, this, uh, membership and it never went anywhere. The LBA has been like, uh, around for like. Maybe twenty years, seventeen years and, and at that time didn't do anything. But because of this money came out and they gave, were given to us, to our previous director. Then they resuscitated the LBA, tried to compete for those funds with us and, and, and they did. But again, we had no, no intentions to compete with anybody. We are not membership driven. And, uh, the attacks continue by this, uh, folks from the LBA, which is also. Um, the owner of the newspaper that uses the newspaper for attacking us and building this, um, misinformation. And we have no control. So, uh, it's a very, um, eh. The complexity of the issue is not just the one, one, one sentence answer. It's just, it has a lot of history.
Okay, I, I, I do understand that. I mean, I do actually most all that. I just, uh, to me, it, it seems very frustrating to have two competing. And it's, uh, you know, Hispanic downtown, you know, for the most part area than to see infighting is just. To me, very frustrating. Um, it seemed like we should all be doing it for the well-being of Pasco and I just wanna see if you had any. Olive branches or anything that you were planning to do in the, in the future. I mean, if we can, I'd love to see, you know, just. When we're putting in this market, great market and Penis Plaza, I would just love to see things move forward and the best of, for Pasco not to. Have kind of infighting and that would only be my, my wish and prayer, so, um, good luck on that.
Councilman Gumples.
Uh, great presentation. Something I didn't hear you talk on is I have an email here that said. You guys didn't get any, uh, ARPA grant money, uh, because you guys were positive. You guys had, didn't, didn't do a loss. So if you can kind of tell the rest of the council, um, why you saw success there and again, congratulations, that's a good thing. You didn't see a loss this year, based on everything you've got going on, especially with not being able to put the fiery food festival on. That's pretty awesome. And then one other comment before, I'll, I'll let you talk. You made a comment about in September, things get a little too cold to put events on, but. I, I know we've had plenty of like COVID clinics where we've had people outside in the negative weather. And I just, you know, we're in the Pacific Northwest. I look at this space that could be utilized all year round if you had the right activities. And so, uh, yeah, that's just my, my thoughts.
Thank you.
Uh, correct, yes. Uh, so the other funds, we did apply for them, uh, back when the Pasco camp, pan. Pasco Chamber of Commerce had them available. Uh, but we did, we were didn't, we were denied because we were positive in twenty twenty. Um, the reason why we were positive is we were able to run into a lot more COVID-related funds that would help our community and help our organization as a whole. So we did apply for them and a lot of them were approved for and received. So that's what made us positive. Um, so that answers your first question. As your second question. Uh, the fiery fruits festival happens in September. We were actually pushing it back to the end of September to kind of tie it up with the con- with the. Pas- uh, Pascal Colima concert that we were trying to host here. Uh, when we were asked to postpone it, we were looking into later dates. The thing is that we had August and then out, November, October and November. Uh, once we get to those dates, it is kind of cold. We do finish the market off as well and that's when we're starting to shut down for the, for the season. It, we've, we as a board and as, as an organization felt like it wasn't ideal to have a fiery fruits festival, which is ideally, you know. A warmer event. You wanna have people out there having a good time in the cold, but we can look into possibility of maybe bringing it back in the cold.
My thought is nothing sounds better than a hot cup of chili when it's like twenty degrees outside, so. Um, that, that's all, it just, it just, again, you know, we're part of the Pacific Northwest. If you have the right activity, maybe the fiery foods festival is not the right one, but. Uh, there's gotta be something surely that maybe we can utilize that space throughout the rest of the year, which would make you guys again more successful, more profitable. Again, looking at. What we've got going on this year. Again, I think Alexia even served s- sitting freezing, you know, hoping people would come through and get vaccinated. So. We're, we're doing it somewhere. And so just, that's just my tidbit. I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with me on that, but it would be nice.
Uh, no, and, and you are correct on that. I am looking into ways to activate the farmer market area, the Penis Park area throughout the winter time as well. We were looking into a winter market. Uh, while we're looking into a facility, but I think I would like it just to kind of do a perimeter with heaters around the market area and then actually have. An outdoor event, make it feel warm and have, uh, warm drinks available throughout the whole season. We also, um. We are looking forward very, we're looking really forward to the, um, Christmas tree lighting this year in the Penis Park area. And that's gonna be another reason to kind of have a bazaar there too. So we are looking into ways to activate it for the winter and have events going on throughout the whole year.
Thank you. Count, um, sorry. Mayor Pretender Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Brusson. And thanks so much for the presentation. Obviously, um, I, I think you all know I've been paying a lot of attention to downtown for a while, but very much more, um. You know, re-engaged and refocused on that over the last few months. Um, so I've got a series of questions and I'll, I'll wait and, and I've got some problems and comments I'll have a little bit later, but I'll give. My fellow council members an opportunity to speak as well. Um, so can you tell me a little bit about the challenges of the DP? The challenges that the DPD has faced over the last year? Um, I, I, your presentation was very positive. Um, however, I'm, I'm hearing a very different story from business owners, from, um, members of specialty kitchen, from. Uh, farmers, from farmers, the farmers market. I'm, I'm hearing a very different story than you just laid out to me and I'd like to understand that better from your perspective.
Uh, yes, from, from business owners and I, I will generally speak of the downtown businesses. I think a lot of the feedback that you're getting back is also due to the fact of the. Collision that we have with LBA and everything and that we've had for a couple of years. Um, for the PSK. And not, not trying to throw anybody out there, but our previous director wasn't too driven to, uh, do the PSK work. He felt like it was something that could be done in a better way, but he just wasn't able to develop a plan to be able to execute it correctly. Uh, so this year I am working a lot with the PSK clients, it kind of helped them better. Uh, like I mentioned earlier, we are looking into doing, putting more, more funds into our promotional, uh, line item so we can help. Push those businesses that we have currently in the PSK. Uh, right now we actually do have twenty-one active businesses in there. Uh, we did lose three just as a fact of, uh, they just had to shut down for all the reasons that had nothing to do with the special specialty kitchen.
Do- does that include, um, like Tina's Tasty Treats? I, I believe they're still in full operation. They're just no longer a client. Is that?
Who's that? Sorry.
Tina's Tasty Treats.
Uh, yes, actually Tina's Tasty Treats was a client that was actually in the PSK for more years than they were supposed to be. Not that they couldn't use a Pasco specialty kitchen, but they just, we had to remove it from the, from the window to be able to place a new client in there. The way the window works is supposed to be a revolving window, so you get up to six years to be there and then you have to pass it on to somebody else, whether that's. That person moving into a brick and mortar, a food truck, or owning a, own restaurant by themselves or a storefront, like Tina's Tasty Treats would have been.
Is, is there anyone in that window?
So right now, yes, we're looking into putting a Mexican-style food restaurant in there. Uh, they're not gonna be, uh, doing your. Your regular tacos and burritos. They actually wanna do home-style cooking meals. Are you gonna be able to take home and, uh, eat at your house with your loved ones?
Um, and then I, I wanna follow up on the, uh, CDBG funding, um, you talked about, because earlier you said that you did not get the funding this year. And it's a little bit more than you're asking for us to additionally contribute.
Uh, yes, correct. So, uh, last year, we, the DPD did not apply for the CDBG funding for this year and it is on a two-year revolving fund. So we're pretty much gonna miss out on that for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. We are looking into reapplying for twenty twenty-four. But this is the reason why we're asking for additional funds to kind of offset the kitchen costs.
So can you tell me why the DPD didn't apply for those funds? I think you've been getting those funds at the CDBG, from the CDBG funds for. Oh gosh, I don't know, a lo- a quite a while right now, right?
Yes, uh, good question. Um, Oscar is, uh, not part of that decision. It, it, it just happened that, um, our previous director. Unbeknownst to us, the board, um, decided not to apply. By the time we found out, it was already, um, done and, 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 uh, so it was. I can't tell you the reasons why he did that, but he felt like the city was, uh, or him, some, something happened. And it's part of the reason that, um, eh, we kind of, um, um, terminated his employment.
Great. I guess just one more question, then I'll, um, take a small break, make sure that the rest of my council members have had a chance to say, to ask questions, but I, I do have some statements afterwards. Uh, one of these for, uh, Director White. Um, can you talk a little bit about that ten thousand dollars of, um, unplanned expenses? Um, it sounds like the city is in tracking to reimburse that. Can you, can you speak to that at all? Is that something that?
They were, uh, Mr. Maloney, they were costs that the DPD incurred because of the, uh, setup this past growing season with the farmer's market. So they couldn't use, uh, obviously the pavilions. So they had, uh, things like shade structures. Um, I, I think some portable generators, uh, incidental expenses that were needed to continue the market operations. Which were, uh, reimbursing.
I- is that being reimbursed out of our general, like our, our, just our general fund or is it coming out of the construction funds for the, uh. Penis Park as part of that as a mitigation for the, the project?
It, we, it'll be. We just had a conversation about that today. I, I believe it will be coming from the construction funds for the project. We seem to have some funding available for that.
Great, thank you. And, uh, one, one last question, um, is, uh. We, we talked, I, I, you had on the slides there, how many businesses currently here? Here's the new ones. Um, what's the, can. And maybe, I don't wanna put you on the spot with having to answer this, but could you maybe email us after this, uh, the, kind of the trend that we're seeing in those businesses? Both the, um, farmers, the farmers market, which I know, you know, took a hit, uh, uh, potentially at this year when having to move out of that space and along the street. Um, but I'd be very interested to see what that trend looks like over time. But I, I know the specialty kitchen was, was pretty chock full a few years ago and. Um, the number that you're saying is, seems really down from what I recall.
Uh, no, yes, definitely. I will double check my numbers again and I can get that email to you some right away.
Great. Again, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. Uh, I really appreciate Mr. Maloney's, uh, line of questioning there because I have the same similar thoughts. I'm just going to express a serious concern that, uh, we missed out on funding and I recognize that's no fault of, of yours. Um, I'm slightly concerned that if the board came in to finding that a little late. The oversight from the board, um, and then ask the city to make that up, uh, I think that puts us in a tough position. That's just my simple concern there. And I do appreciate the, the question, uh, about the growth of businesses because I think. The festivals and the, and the events are wonderful. It brings an attractiveness to our downtown and I greatly appreciate the efforts that go into that. Um, so I would be, I am interested in knowing, uh, how many businesses are filling slots through DPD and looking at. I know you're looking at a five-year projection that you're gonna work on, your, your master plan. Um, just really helping us understand if we were to invest not only the hundred, but the extra fifty, what's the ROI? What does that look like? Uh, you know, we have storefronts that are vacant, you know, how do you intend to work with those on filling them? Those would be, uh, my, kind of my requests of the information that you bring back to us to, especially again, asking for the additional funds.
Um, yes, and actually, uh, speaking of the storefront, of vacant storefronts that we have in downtown, I am, I am conducting a. Inventory of all the businesses that we have in downtown, including our social, including our vacant storefronts and contact, contacting the business owned, uh, business owners and. The property owners so they can work with us on what business would be ideal to go to the downtown. So we can start focusing more on putting actual businesses that we need in downtown and not just keep multiplying businesses that we already have in downtown to attract more people.
No, thank you. That's, I mean, that's a great insight there, you know, trying to diversify it while maintaining the core competency, if you will, and. And theme of downtown, um, and obviously working with, as you're seeing all these other plans, hopefully we can. Find a way to attract additional businesses and some differing businesses. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gumples.
Um, I, I just wanna kind of point out, it sounds like even with your challenges, you, again, you highlighted that you've got eight new businesses going on there. So you're still seeing some growth in the, in the Pasco specialty kitchen. Uh, but I think I'll, I'll summarize, I think my, my council member's comments is, I think. Sounds like you guys have identified what the problem is down there and we very much wanna see you work continually to continue to bring in more clients. And again, it sounds like you've had some hiccups, but it sounds like you guys pretty well identified what your issues are. And when you have well-identified issues, you hopefully have a really good action plan in place to move forward on that, so. Uh, good job. Hopefully, can you see that? But again, Councilman Serrano brought up a good point. Um, if the board's letting us go, so I guess we're, we're gonna be expecting our board to make sure they step up their game and we don't miss out on opportunities like this. It sounds like though, to be, to be fair, you guys applied for a lot of block grants, so you got that money and again, go back to why you were net positive this year. You were doing some of that, so great, great job in that avenue.
Councilman Melon.
Thank you. Again, I appreciate you guys being in the hot seat on all this and so I was gonna bring up some more of a positive. Yeah, thank you. Again, I appreciate you guys being in the hot seat on all this. And so I was gonna bring up some more of a positive thing. Um I know when my kids were younger, they used to like going down to the Cinco de Mayo, of course, the parades, and hopefully get some candy. And uh I was throwing this out there, what, I know I had brought it up a couple of years ago, but uh some cities, they have like the paper, uh like the lanterns, and then they let the kids paint the lanterns and then put them up. And then I've heard from different, talking to different people about the projects, that uh it's a very cheap way, but they have like just, you know, paints, and the kids get to write their name, or wet it glitter, all that kind of stuff. But it makes the kids feel like they are part of the downtown, that they, when the city hangs up something at a festival, it it really makes them like they could go and get their picture taken with it, or and I would just recommend, it doesn't have to be this, but something like that where you could hang up something that the kids made, but it looks cool, and again, like the lanterns, like a globe. Um just throwing that out there as an idea to get more engagements, because the more you have kids coming down there, when they get older, they'll still hopefully come down there and they'll start liking stores or restaurants, and they'll, you know, hopefully ask their parents to come back. So just trying to throw out something positive there. Um hopefully, you guys do something like that in the future, and uh good luck to you.
Yes, actually mentioning the kid, kids and having kids activity at the market, we we didn't come up with new plans this year, but we will. Um but we actually did team up with Waterfollies, and we're gonna be the sponsors of the kids tickets. And they're gonna be giving out the market, so that was something really exciting. We also got contacted by Amazon to be a sponsor for the Pasco Farm Market this year, this coming season. So that'll be another sponsor for this year.
Thank you. But yeah, all you have to do is uh just do a Google search on painted paper lanterns, and it shows uh like this one has a Hispanic community uh putting together all these globes, and then they hang it up in the streets. And so again, the kids could all see their artwork. And it looks like it takes, you know, twenty minutes or whatever. So it looks pretty inexpensive. It looked like a lot of fun. Um so I just throwing that out there, maybe that's a suggestion for the upcoming year.
Um Mayor Portem Maloney, go ahead.
Thank you. And I'll also make some, consider these are statements, not so much questions, so don't worry about addressing these uh in this meeting, but I mean, I mean, in my view, and and taking a look at the 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 previous uh funding plans and such, there's more or less, you can kind of summarize into four things. Um you know, running the specialty kitchen, running the market, supporting downtown businesses and holding events. There are some administrative functions beyond that, for example, inventory of of um of buildings and such, but um I mean, you know, even just recently, we're seeing, we're seeing complaints from longstanding specialty kitchen clients that are blasting us on social media. We've lost a lot of of um of those vendors um over the over the last few years um to not very positive circumstances. So we're 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 having basically um small businesses growing in our specialty kitchen and then leaving. Uh they're leaving to other cities, and they're not looking at Pasco for their locations because of how they feel about Pasco when they leave. Um I I and so I can name names, but I'll 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 save us from doing that. Um the market's been having problems the same way as well. We've been losing key vendors and and farmers that have been there for a long time that don't wanna come back. Um you know, certainly have uh other businesses that I've just recently heard have been having some major problems with the with the uh um with the farmers market. So we're we're harming again, the um homegrown businesses that know that that are getting to a spot where they don't feel like they can do business with Pasco, even as a city, let alone just our downtown region. Um in terms of engagement with downtown businesses, we've, we we as a city have hired a director of um um in in Mike Gonzalez, who is spending about half his time engaging in just downtown businesses. So this is another area where the DPD has not met its mission. Um and then events have been a real struggle for years and years, uh to the point where, you know, I've been seriously worried about people getting injured. Um just even just a few years ago, let alone we're talking about potentially losing funding and such. And I think one of the key items here is that um DPD has not been able to hold, to hire and and keep a qualified and effective director. I've been paying attention to downtown. I think my first downtown tour um in the specialty kitchen was a decade ago. I think it's been through six different directors since then. Um and I'm not sure that very many of them have been well-qualified for the position, and certainly don't, I'm I'm concerned, you know, really haven't met up for the task. So I guess where I'm at is structurally, I'm not sure the DPD is up for this job. Um I don't think that they, the success rate has shown that you guys um as an organization have been able to be very effective. Now, this is not about the people. Uh Gabriel, I have the utmost respect for you and the board members that um that serve on the DPD. Uh great people. Oscar, I'm not, this is not a personal attack, but structurally, I watched a decade of inability for it to accomplish its basic core mission of improving our downtown. And so the results, I think, just kind of speak for themselves here. So I really think that we need to do is we we need to really look at the charter and the model of what we're doing with the with the DPD and how that's structured. I certainly heard that there's a possibility that that what makes sense is to have a found, split into a foundation and it and a PDA as two separate organizations to keep um roles and responsibilities clear and allow for a much uh for much clearer, brighter line of what, you know, um contributions, donations and such can be used for and 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 how that can work. I think that might be a really effective structure at helping helping uh set this up and set it with a much better foundation. I really think we need to hire a temporary consultant, and I'd certainly would advocate for the city to be a part of this. Um someone with deep experience in PDAs and in downtown developments to help reset this foundation, so we have a better ground on which to build. I I just, I I've heard the same thing out of the DPD year after year, and I have yet to see anything's come to fruition. I look at the the funding agreement over the over twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, um and I look at those ones, and those are all the same things you've presented here as your next steps forward. You know, putting together a strategic plan, building relationships, setting these things, um and inventory of the of the downtown buildings. This was already in the plan and what the city has already paid for the last two years to be done, and we're just not seeing the results. So again, I think that we need a structural change here to really re- really reset the foundation. And again, not about you individually, I I really have the utmost respect and appreciation for 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 everyone who's doing the hard work down there. But I think structurally, we were clearly at a spot where this is is not working out well for me. So I I I I'm strongly encouraging us to take some some clear and decisive action to do something different. So thank you.
Any other comments?
Just want to um just give a quick answer on that. Um it's not an easy uh job, uh Council, Councilman Maloney. Um the master plan just showed you what the situation of the downtown is as far as buildings, like new construction, like who comes, who goes. And um COVID on top of that. So um it is not an easy answer to find to say, let's uh revitalize, and it's gonna happen like that. We have businesses, maybe uh I'm gonna say about sixteen to twenty businesses that have been there for a long time. But there are a lot of businesses that come and go in six months in a year. There is very little we can do. We try to support in in different ways, but you know, they they have to have a lot of um, it it people think that they can come and set up a shop and boom, it's gonna happen, and it is, it's not like that, especially in Pasco. Thanks to the city that pay attention to the to the to the town that that was back in the eighties, that we were looking really bad, like a ghost town. And a few of us got together and let's do something, and if we we can form an association before it became an authority. So it's not just ten years, it goes twenty years. It goes for a long, long time, and the answer is not simple, it's not right quick. We keep searching for a good director. Uh we have one that committed fraud, and you know that. That we were in a situation where uh then another one, uh another administrator that the county committed fraud too, and the whole thing looked bad. Looked Pasco again, the ugly duckling. You know, we shaking that and we try to figure out a a a better way to move forward, and we hire um some directors and we we experience and yes, uh the 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 resume, the the interviews. I'm a retired school teacher principal, and I can tell you, there are some teachers that show really well in the in the application, and they 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 come with a beautiful resume, they interview fantastic, and then they go in the classroom and boom, they fail. So you know, it it's it's uh, we're gonna keep trying. Now, if the city wants to do something else, it's up to you, but we have the the public agency, we have the the five oh one C three where those two things are together, and there are some things that cannot be together. The five oh one C three cannot be a public agency, so that's one of the things that we try to navigate. And every director that comes in has the same challenge. That's why our previous director was challenging you, the city, uh and and all uh and the staff, that the things that we were doing were not right because of, you know, the 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 audits from the audit from uh from HUD. We were paying like thirteen thousand dollars for for audits, and it was really bad, you know, it's really bad. So the audit uh cannot be done on a nonprofit. You know, at at public agencies, yes. So there's some navigating that is gonna have to be done, but the city will decide what what they wanna do, and that's okay. Do the best, but do the best for the city. Thank you.
And I guess my 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 observation would be, all the things that you just mentioned there, um the recent history has all been under this current structure. And that's why I'm thinking at this point in time, well, if if this were a business, um and I were a business owner or a C or uh on the board of directors, I'd be seriously challenged to believe that my business was being successful and that under its current structure, and I'd be interested in what sort of decisive action I could take um to to fix that. And so that is actually our role. Ultimately, the buck stops um here at the city of Pasco for um oversight of the DPD. And so um I believe we need a PDA downtown, absolutely. Um and I believe that a foundation be would be very wonderfully successful. But clearly, the whole structure and the way we've set it up right now is just not bearing fruit. So I'll just, I'll just say about that. Thank you.
Yes, and just to touch on that, we are looking into restructuring the DPD, so we can have a better structure, so we can have a more functional organization to move forward. That was one of the topics that we're looking into. That was one of the topics that we covered in the board retreat, and we, as a as a board, we all agreed to do it.
Thank you. Another comment from Councilman Gumples.
Uh kind of a hybrid comment, hybrid question. So I I think, Mr. Portugal, they hit a good point. Sometimes you can have a great resume and have people fall short. That that is true in all aspects of life, but I think Mayor Portem Maloney brings up a really good point, you know, our our history and structure, and I thank you guys for taking a look at that. And I was wondering what I like the idea of separating the two entities, it makes a lot of sense, um but I think that we've got some really good new board members that might bring some new life, a new perspective into the DPD. Um but my my question, kind of just for for council, and maybe staff can direct us, but what does the hiring process look like? Comments were made about, you know, city has hired the last director. Uh you know, when we appoint committee members, they come in front of us. Do we not, do we also not select a DPD executive director?
No, we do not.
Is that something that we can address? Is that something that we can, I mean, as part of the hiring process, they sit and interview with the city council? No?
No.
Again, these are just, these are just open questions, mostly just because I'm not aware of what the hiring process looks like for that position.
I I guess, Mr. Gumples, when I'm thinking about what what I'm talking about, I I don't have a charter amendment in mind of any specific sort. I think that there's a lot of options, um and and one could wonder whether it's something like that of understanding better what the city's more active role in this could be. Um so I I think some of those are great questions, and once I I don't have, I'm, I don't have a a preconceived notion on, I just, I I see that there's a structural issue here. It's maintain. Thank you.
Well, if we decide to workshop, I'd be happy to workshop that. It it sounds like it's worth a look, you know?
We have some comments from city manager?
I was just gonna note that um the executive director reports to the board, so the board hires the executive director. Which, I mean, you wouldn't, yeah, as a board member, I mean, and as a council, if if the board, if the executive director is gonna be responsible to the board, they probably should be doing the hiring. You don't wanna give a board the out that, well, you hired this person, right? And gave them to us. So you don't wanna put yourself in that position.
But um
Awesome.
Councilman uh Campos brings up a good question. We do have some new uh board members that are very energetic and um um Kylie Grimes, Alexia Strad, and and Thomas Grambaugh, they're uh uh I'm really excited about all their ideas and and working with new new ways of looking at things, and so I'm expecting things are gonna take a a good course with their help.
Thank you. We have some more comments from Councilman Serrano.
Just one last question to staff. We have a funding request in front of us. It's a workshop meeting. Obviously, we don't make decisions tonight. Was the intent to bring this back next week? Do we have time? Uh is there a specific funding mechanism required immediately? Uh it sounds like we've peeled back some questions, and we obviously, as a council, probably wanna further discuss this before we uh move to fund this. So what's our timing look like?
If the plan was not to bring it back next week, uh we we'd need to develop a a a new agreement, you know, and update that along with the scope. And it sounds like there's gonna be more discussion with the council where we can get to that. In the meantime, uh we we've administratively done a a short-term extension so that there is some dollars flowing into, under the, under the old terms, flowing into the DPD.
When will that extension dollar value run out?
Uh I I think we're, it's about six, six to eight months.
Okay. So we we have some time to kick this around and really figure out, you know, whether it's a structural modification or or whatever the case is, or let it fly, or I mean, it it sounds like we've had a great discussion on this, and making a decision isn't immediate. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Um
Thank you, Mayor. I had one question before you guys, thank you. I had one quick question before you guys leave. Uh listening to Councilman Maloney's uh speech, or however you wanna word it, rant, yeah, definitely brought back a lot of uh things that I had kinda, I guess, temporarily forgotten. Uh and so my question to you is, is it, like, if we were a banker, after a while, we would stop giving you guys money. I mean, if you guys, I know there's been events that you guys have thrown that lost a lot, thousands of dollars uh due to poor bookkeeping. There's, I mean, I've heard tons of rumors, but I do know that there has been events that have lost a lot of money. So my question to you is, how much longer do you think we should give you guys before we do decide to change it up? I mean, I was just curious, what's your thoughts? How how much longer should we keep going? Because since I've been on council, it seems like I have heard the same story year after year after year, that it'll be better, it'll be better, that it's really not. So I am kind of agreeing with uh Councilman Maloney on this, that it has been frustrating. We do hear the same song and dance. So what is your timetable, or what do you, what do you guys have in plan for this?
Well, if you are a banker, um I would say that you invest a hundred thousand with us and you get seventy-five back. So you are only giving us twenty-five thousand out of the hundred in reality. So as a banker, you know that for that little money, we're doing a lot. You expect us to have too many events, which mostly all the uh the uh downtown developments throughout the Main Street that are that we know, they don't. None of them are with the city like we are. They work pretty much on a five oh one C three on their own. So um in time, I can't tell, I can't tell you, we're gonna have uh the downtown, uh the DDP in in top shape in six months or or a year. But I can tell you, we're giving our best, uh we're trying our best, and and I'm really excited about new board members that are uh coming out with more ideas, and we're having more retreats, what we call them, uh workshops, so that we can brush up on a lot of things that we're doing and how can we do them better. Now, Main Street, to qualify for the hundred that you that you give us and that you get seventy-five percent back, we have to be uh in compliance with Main Street, and right now, we're not. So I I apply for an extension, and and I'm thinking that the six months, uh when I spoke to uh Mr. Um uh Sable, um that that will be pretty cool, because it'll match with uh mainly what we're looking at, replacing, hire a new director. And we're looking for a, for the the best candidate, for the best director, because we know this is a really complex situation, it's not an easy job. You have a lot of moving parts, and a lot of people are throwing darts at you, arrows and stuff. So um but we are trying our best, and um the Main Street gave us another ninety days, well, I'm in the process. I applied for ninety days' extension. And then then we'll we'll know, they'll let me know if if we qualify, because if we don't have a full-time uh director, the city does not qualify for um the the tax credit that you guys get from the one hundred that you give us. So we are trying our best, and and I'm thinking that your money is well-spent, but you know, you may have different ideas, you may expect some other things, and and that's that's okay. That is your way of looking at things. Um just once in a while, put yourselves in our shoes, and 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 the people that we work with, the business that we work with, the um the challenges that we have, and and you know, uh I'm not saying it's impossible, but uh but I'm saying it's unique. So I cannot give you a a timeline, but I can tell you, we're doing our best.
Okay, and I'm sure we'll be talking about this probably at our retreat as well. Um I mean, we obviously want the best for the downtown. We want to have good publicity. Um so when we hear about events losing or embezzlement, obviously, these are bad, you know, black eyes and this, from the city's point of view, so um but yeah, I'll definitely be rooting for you guys and praying for you guys, and hopefully we'll find the right candidate this time.
Any final comments from any of our council members?
All right, so um well, my comments were pretty much already what everyone has already said. My questions have been already answered and asked by everyone. So um my concern and and um is the same concern we all have. Um accountability. Um we get calls, we get emails, and Mr. Portugal, because of the relationship that I created with someone And Mr. Portugal, because of the relationship that I created with some of the businesses while I volunteered out there for some of the events, people are trusting to call me directly to tell me what the concerns are, what their complaints are. And it's everything everyone has already mentioned, what Councilman Maloney has mentioned. So obviously, there's a concern. We now have a proposal for not only an extension, but we have a proposal for additional funding. And we come back to transparency. How are we gonna prove after years and years of no actual result? So all I can say is that we're gonna have to discuss this, we're gonna have to figure out what the best plan is. And again, I want to reiterate what everyone has already said. This is not to put blame on you, on the board. This is just a structural, operational situation that does need to be fixed. Again, thank you for your presentation. And I'm sure as council and staff will come back and address this whole situation and work it out to the best for not only the DPDA, but especially for our businesses, for vendors, for everyone that is part of the downtown and everyone that participates within our city limits from outside, especially in your events. So again, thank you, and we'll look forward to some final results here soon.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. And when you look at the structural, like you said, look at this, the PSK, the kitchen, is an incubator. And we had had some businesses ready to go take on a building. And the city has this very difficult process. So a couple of those guys, those companies or groups that we were incubating, they went to the other side of the river because the city made it so difficult for them to get into a building. So when you look at the whole picture, look and make it easier for us so that when we are incubating folks and they're ready to go take a motor, a building, that the city makes it, I'm not saying that give us a priority or favors, but to make it so, to make it accessible for these folks that are coming out and ready to have their own business. Yes, it is important to have accountability. Thank you, Mayor Barajas.
That is definitely a joint effort, and so we'll address that accordingly. Thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we actually need a five-minute break. We'll come back at nine eighteen.
Okay, and we are back. So again, it was a long presentation, but we appreciate it. And with that, we go back to item C, Transportation System Master Plan. Again, Director White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. And this will be a presentation on the city's very first comprehensive plan of transportation issues. Right off the bat, I'm gonna introduce Jacob Gonzalez, our planning manager, who's here tonight to introduce a presentation. And Dan Ford, our city engineer, is also here. So we have the two principals involved in this project here in case council has any detailed questions. Maybe I'll just go ahead and introduce Carl Springer from DKS, Madam Mayor. He's a project manager for this issue with DKS, and he'll be leading us through the issues with the master plan, his nearness completion, mainly focused on implementation of the plan itself.
Thank you for that.
All right. Good evening. Again, my name is Carl Springer with DKS Associates. Thanks for the introduction, Rick. So tonight, in the past work sessions we've done together, we've gone through the components of the plan. We've given you an overview of what the staff and the city participants in this planning process wanted to see done in this plan. So what I'm representing tonight is not the plan itself, but kind of what comes next. Aside from adopting the plan, which I'm assuming that will happen in the near term, the next time this issue comes before this group, it'll be asking the question of where you'll be ready to adopt the plan. My topics for tonight is really more about what happens after that, because in my experience, the implementation end of these plans are where these really become reality. So I wanted to spend my little bit of time with you tonight talking about that. So next slide, please. So these are the issues I'm gonna touch on, mainly the first three about funding, about design standards, and about the development code. The last two, while important, probably aren't too concerning for city council members. They're more technical type issues, but they could be important, so I wanted to touch on them. So let's move on to the next slide, please. Starting with funding, I find in my long years of doing these kinds of planning, this is the major weakness for most long-term master plan processes. And what I always want to start with is just helping you recognize kind of what the planning plan is calling for, what kind of revenues the city typically sees, and what, if any, funding gap you might have. And if you look at the numbers on this slide, and what you also have in your packet, the plan calls for a little over six hundred million dollars in funding by the year 2040 to construct all components of the plan. The city's funding currently generates somewhere in the range of about three hundred and sixty million over that timeframe, if you span it out to 2040. Your current traffic impact fee, your transportation impact fee contributes a bit more, another twelve million on top of that. But when you take away your regularly scheduled funding and the fee, what you have left is just under three hundred million, and that's the funding gap. Which I can tell you, City of Pasco is not alone in that I have yet to do a long-range master plan where fully funding has been achieved under the current revenue streams, revenue sources. The point of this slide is to bring your awareness to the fact that there, A, is a gap, and B, that it's about half the amount of the funding that you need. So it's pretty sizable. In the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about different ways to address that. So in past sessions, we've identified that there's been studies done to consider higher rates for the impact fee. That's certainly not a decision you're gonna talk about tonight, or I'm gonna go into it in any depth, but that's a tool in your toolbox in terms of adjusting your revenue options there. As you can see in the slide, the fee would, if put to the rate that's legally defensible in the state of Washington, you would basically close the gap. But it would be extraordinarily high fee in doing so, and it's probably something that wouldn't be economically feasible. And so your challenge ahead of you is that what is the right fee? And so what I looked at is the middle level. You looked at your neighboring cities, and I believe that's in Richland, one area of Richland. If you took the amount of growth that Pasco's expecting and looked at their current fees, instead of being twelve million, it'd be forty million. So a bit of a bump there, but there are other options available as well, so as noted on the slide. One of the things we haven't included in our calculation is your opportunities to get funding through state or federal grant opportunities. As I'm sure you're all aware, the federal government recently passed a funding program that gives new opportunities in that regard. But those are all things that the city would have to compete for and successfully win. So we didn't use that in our calculus at this point to date. So that's my bit on funding. I could pause there for a second, Mayor, if it'd be helpful, if there's any questions on this piece of it.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Actually, yes. Councilman Serrano.
Thank you. I'll start off with, I am not advocating this approach. Let me be very clear here. I am not advocating this approach. Coming from California, they had Melrose bonds. And as I understand them, essentially, the builder would construct something and then have like a twenty-year bond that ran with the house for these improvements. Is there something like that structured in the state of Washington whereby, you know, a builder would be able to put, you know, basically bond ten million dollars worth of improvements, do it him or herself, or the company's self, and then pass it back through to the purchase of a property? I know we have the TIF, which is a one-time, you know, I think it's like twelve or fifteen hundred dollar fee. But the Melrose bonds, depending on where you were, could be upwards of hundreds or even towards a thousand dollars a month. Again, I am not advocating that approach. But if we are in such a delta of three hundred-plus million dollars or near three hundred million dollars, we're gonna have to figure something out. Is that something viable here in the state of Washington?
I've not heard of that application here, but maybe others on staff are more aware of that.
I have heard of it in California. We don't have that here in this state.
Just one other good reason to be here.
Yeah.
All right. Like I said, not advocating. We're gonna have to problem-solve at some point, though.
Right.
And it doesn't look like we have any other comments. Mr. Springer?
All right. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the next topic is something a city engineer will lead, so getting the design standards adjusted. There was some changes proposed and recommended through the master planning process, basically to upgrade the quality of the walking and biking experience on some of the lower-class roads in the city if the current design standards really didn't accommodate what other cities are doing commonly around the state of Washington and across the Pacific Northwest. So we're recommending some adjustments for that. In the near term, why that really matters is because of the pending development up in the Broadmoor area. People are asking, how big should the road be? And what that means is, what is the right-of-way requirement to build the ultimate road that you'll be looking for there? And that's a very important question to answer as they're putting together their development plan. So this is a project that the city engineer needs to take on and move ahead. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is purely an administrative in-house process that needs to be done as a part of it. I don't think there's an adoption piece for the council that I'm aware of. And then I'll go on to the next slide. The next big piece, and I think the most important piece, is the development code. There's three components of it, as noted here on the slide. It really is about kind of tailoring the changes to the road cross-sections that was talked about on the prior slide and make that be synchronized with what's expressed in the development code. But there's a number of other factors in there that were identified through the master planning process about connectivity and better access to transit and more, what I'd call permeable neighborhoods. We talked about that quite a long while ago now, I think it was probably a year ago, where we talked about how the shape and character of Pasco's neighborhoods have changed over time from what used to be a pretty traditional grid system to something much more confined and what I would say more modular. So access is much more limited, which works great if you're driving everywhere. But if you're not driving everywhere, or you would rather not drive all the time everywhere, it's important to think about giving neighbors options. That includes, you know, just free choice, but also folks who, you know, choose not to have cars or want to walk or want to ride their bikes. When you think about the share of your population that either can't drive or shouldn't be driving, that's a pretty big piece of any city, any larger city's population that may not be well-suited to driving. So it's important to incorporate that aspect into the shape of the network throughout the city. So they're represented in these three areas, and I'll touch on them. I'm not gonna read all the bullets here, because I know they're in your packet, and I'll just kind of leave that to questions. But next slide, please. So the first is under streets and sidewalks. A little bit of tweaking on the width of sidewalks, not significant, still it needs to be adjusted to reflect the latest number. The other factors mentioned here, I would, I guess the one I draw your attention to is a little bit more clarity about guidelines to implement complete streets. And if you're not familiar with that terminology, complete streets just means providing meaningful and safe and convenient access for not only motor vehicles, but for walking and biking. That's really the whole spectrum there. That's really the whole spectrum there in that case. Next slide, please. So under the subdivision regulations, this is where we're talking about a couple important strategic factors. So a lot of subdivisions aren't fully built in the first phase. But it's important for staff to see how the street system will be connected as phases are implemented and what those connections will look like, and making sure that the future phases accommodate those future extensions. That's a piece of work that's very important for the kind of incremental style of development occurs pretty routinely. The other thing, so the next bullet, updating the cross-sections for roadway design for all road classes, updating the connectivity standards to match with what's reflected in the master plan, and accommodating, doing a better job of accommodating exceptionally long blocks. The classic case for that is you've got neighborhoods that are basically encompassed by either development, you know, so they're backed up against another neighborhood behind it, or they have like a sound wall on one side. And so if somebody wants to get to, say, a bus stop or across the street to go to school, they have a very indirect route to get there. And that's what this is really kind of calling out and looking for ways to deal with that. Next slide. I put this slide in here, we've talked about it before, but I just kind of want to remind you how development patterns have evolved over the years. So being very simplistic here, right? But, you know, if you look at the older part of the town, near the downtown, it is the traditional grid. You've got a mix in Area 2, or you've just got a mix of the grid plus, you've got the rural core in the middle. But certainly, everything north of 182 is the newer neighborhoods, where you have a pretty profoundly different neighborhood shape. And frankly, that is the area where we got the most comments from the public in all our open houses and online events about access, safety, difficult to get in and out of neighborhoods if you're not in a car, which doesn't sound like a big deal, because it's not proportionally speaking, it's not a large component of the population. But still, you know, there are people that live in the neighborhood and need a fair and safe way to get there just as well. So next slide. The last part on zoning, you can read this for yourself, but it's some of these things that are kind of self-explanatory, like if, just the way you lay out a site development, and if you're going to have a transit stop nearby, it's important to think through how somebody getting off the bus would navigate their way onto that site, get to the building they care about, or what other kind of amenity that's going on there, just to kind of think through that process so that if you're, you are on foot, that it's just as accessible as if you weren't. So that's the one I wanted to highlight. I found that to be very helpful at the development review stage. It just helps things fall into place in a much more reasonable time way, timeframe, timeframe. Let's see. The other one, yeah, item, or bullet number four, that touches on the access spacing standards that we talked about, that dictate, and kind of the spacing between streets, it dictates how long a block should be, what the circumference of a block should be. So those are all guidelines that can be used as development plans are put together. So that's about all I had on that one. Next slide, please. Couple other items, like I said, are a little bit more technical. If you looked at the master plan, the draft version of the master plan that's being circulated, there is an accommodation for what we call Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. So there's been a pretty universal cry of asking for tools to slow down traffic in neighborhoods. And so we've given some guidance in the plan about how to address that, specifically calling out a class of roadway called this Neighborhood Collector Street. And by our account, those are the best candidates for implementing some type of traffic calming measures. But what the, to really make this direct for staff, it's important to have, again, clear and objective standards for not only where they would be, but will the neighborhood affected support the tool that's being suggested? And is the tool that they're asking for even right the most effective way to deal with a problem at hand? So give clear, kind of thoughtful guidelines for that, just to make it understood by both sides of the coin. The last point is, it is a technical one, it's mobility targets. So mobility targets is kind of your metric for success when you're looking at congestion. And right now, that measure of success is universal for all types of intersections. And we're saying that's probably not the way it should be. You should probably consider the traffic signal different than from a four-way stop, from a two-way stop, from a roundabout. They all should be considered unique for their type of control patterns so that you give a reasonable and even comparison between them. So we're suggesting that differential should be accounted for in the way site development is evaluated in your future cycle of doing comprehensive plan updates. That kind of technology can be used as well. And that frankly is much more common these days to do it in kind of a balanced way like this instead of one metric. So I'll leave it at that. I think that's the last slide, I believe, right? It is indeed. So let me stop there and see if that made sense, and if you had any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Springer. Do we have any comments? We sure do. Councilman Gumples.
I'll make this quick. This is more of a, just a bit of glad handing. Director White, I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think the whole reason why we have this master transportation plan conversation going is from some of the conversation we had on Planning Commission. And I believe, it just, don't get me wrong, but I think you and Jacob kind of took this. It wasn't even a direction from Planning Commission. We just saw an opportunity to add this in on our comprehensive plan update. And I just, that's awesome that you guys took the opportunity to fit this in. And again, as Director White said, this is the first time we've ever had one. With how fast we've grown over the last 10, 15 years, it seems crazy that we've never had one. So, great job, Jacob. Thank you, Director White. Really appreciate it. More pointed question, it sounds like a lot of the heavy lifting on this will be done from the Planning Commission. So a lot of the code updates and municipal things will be happening at that level?
That's correct. A great deal of them will be. And the Planning Commission, as you know, has been a part of the process to date. I would ask, Mr. Gonzalez, if you can provide a brief timeline on the next steps involved with the adoption of the plan itself?
Well, Jacob's making his way up here. I'm pretty excited right now. I think we have a very talented Planning Commission in effect. And so once this is going, I feel pretty confident that we're going to see a lot of really good work from that Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. As Director White had mentioned, this component of the TSMP or the master plan is intended to provide council with some general guidance and parameters with regards to how to actually turn a plan into reality as our consultant Carl Springer mentioned. What we wanted to do before adoption, though, was get additional direction from council in regards to the hardest part of the planning process, which was implementation. There are several various components related to the implementation of it. Some of them are more unadministrative, take, that require discussions and coordination with public works. Obviously, our city engineer, Dan Ford. And there's others that are a little bit more timely and require a little bit more discussion with the Planning Commission, obviously, up with the council. And so before we moved forward with moving forward, we wanted to sort of receive any additional input. We've already collected on top of the comments from the draft master planning document, and this is what I would argue is probably the most important part, which is how do we actually implement it? So I don't know if that suffices, Director White or council, but certainly happy to answer any additional questions, or Dan Ford himself?
Thank you. We do have some questions or comments from Mayor Bertamaloni.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Barahas, and thank you, Carl, and thank you, Jacob, for your additional information here. So, you know, and obviously, this is all about having clear and well-defined rules, right? That's what benefits us as a city. And it really, I think the more important part is it really benefits the developers, because they need to know how to plan their projects, how to price it, what they're going to do moving forward. So it's really important that we get through this, and that we set this clear guidance. Of course, the devil's in the details, right, on each of these components? So obviously, this presentation is very high-level at this point in time. So I know we've gotten into some of those a little more depth at various points in times. I'm certainly in favor of the general concepts of the directions we're going. I think I've expressed that in the past as well, that most of these things are simple, to me, common sense. And maybe it's because of where I live, and my experience is being able to walk or take a bus or drive wherever I want to go is clean and smooth, much cleaner and smoother than where I used to live over, off of burden. So what I guess I wanted to understand, Mr. Gonzalez, maybe you can help us out with this, is there's touchpoints back with council? So there'll be a process where some of these items will go through the Planning Commission. I hear, I think I heard you say that you're looking for us a general thumbs up or set of concerns or feedback, even at this meeting, to kind of help guide staff. And then in the future, each of these components will be in some form or fashion that will have the master plan approved. And then as we're working out the details as to how to exactly implement these into the various, into the code, then those will come back and cycle through us over time? Or is this all kind of at once soon? We're going to have this all in front of us?
Yeah, it might be unrealistic and likely unfeasible to adopt everything, including the standards recommended out of the master plan. With the adoption of the master plan, there's obviously some of these changes that are a higher priority and have more of an impact on the development that's just really around the corner from either a mobility, safety, or a financial standpoint. And those are the ones that staff would certainly like to prioritize, assuming that the plan is adopted. But I think working with both the team at DKS and obviously in-house with staff here at the City of Pasco, I think we kind of understand where the highest needs are with regards to the changes that need to occur right now, and those that we can maybe take a little bit more time to evaluate both the change and the benefits of those or the potential consequences. But certainly, I think that with regards to the master plan adoption, adopting it allows us to move forward under the goals and policies of the master plan and bring that back through the public process with the commission, and then back here with you.
All right, great. Well, I guess I'll say that I have not seen in this presentation something that really triggered me as being some negative aspect that I'd really want to dig. Obviously, I want to know more details about a lot of things. It's not, maybe not at this meeting, but I don't see anything that really is really problematic for me. I will say, you know, I'm open to the idea of reevaluating our TIF rate, especially looking at how low it compares to some of our neighboring cities. But I'd really want to understand that in context of overall impact fees and what that looks like for developers as a whole, as opposed to just an isolated, looking at this. It's easy for us to pile a lot of things that ends up with a very large package there before I'd be, want to be, you know, moving forward with a specific number of, you know, of looking at that rate that would match, you know, a total of, you know, $40 million through 2040 or whatever that number needs to look like. So I'd like to know more information about that, but, and see that comparison. But outside of that, I didn't see anything immediately that, that I have specific concerns with. Does that help, at least from a council member's perspective? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would you have questions or comments from Councilman Serrano?
Thank you. Just one thing we constantly hear when we're updating standards, plans, stuff like this, just please make sure you socialize this as best as possible. Last thing we want to do is get to the last minute and then hear specifically from like the construction entities around here and building and developers that we hadn't heard of this. Obviously, we're, you know, for those who are listening, we're talking about it now. So let's start with that. And then to the extent that you can, just please, again, make sure that they're aware and they have opportunity for input. I know you do, but it's, for whatever reason, there's some miscommunication. Let's figure out, maybe this can be the place to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we do have more comments from Councilman Gumples first, and then followed by Councilman Mill.
Just last one really quick. I think it's been a couple weeks since I saw a draft of the transportation master plan. Is that still available online? Is it current?
Yeah, well, it's not, it does not incorporate the comments received from the public, staff, and Planning Commission or council. We're taking all of that in. We ended the public comment period in, I think, at the end of the year. It was open for about three months, kind of an extended period of time. But if there's anything that you'd like to have addressed or question, certainly staff would be able to do that for you.
Okay. Just curiosity, then, will we see the transportation master plan again prior to us making a big moving forward decision then?
Yes.
Okay.
And thanks for the presentation. I do really appreciate it. My one concern is like, how last week's council, how we adopted the Harris development, the Harris Farm. And then it always seems that, like in certain neighborhoods, when we talk about connectivity, that doesn't really like jive, like, again, like people were heading down, they would head down Court and then up Road, Road 100. And to me, it seems like it would be a great, at least from where I live, it would be great to like have Chapel Hill tie in with Crescent. That way, we don't have as many people coming down Court Street, especially with the speeding. And I'm just saying, there's those little things that I would love to see, I mean, again, I think everybody would love to see it happen before we jump to new developments, that we get some of these other backroads done, connectivity, so people can actually get different avenues to get into these bigger subdivisions that we're now talking about. And again, hopefully, this can come up sooner than later. It's just very frustrating when you talk about all these cars coming in and then not having access roads. So that's my point on that.
Thank you for that. And I apologize, Councilwoman Roach, if you're still there. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thanks for the attention, Mayor. Now, the conversation seemed to be pretty robust this evening, but thank you for checking in.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around still. So no further questions or comments. Thank you again for the presentation, Mr. Springer. Thank you. And with that, we move to item D, MAMO, Single Room Occupancy Housing. And Director White, again.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor and council. And SRO, Single Room Occupancy Units, are a housing type, I guess, that has kind of fallen out of favor in past decades. We're seeing a resurgence of them, both nationally and here locally. The city adopted a single-room occupancy code process several years ago. So now we join with Kennewick and Richland to allow single-room occupancies, SROs, in various commercial zones. So the agenda report tonight contains a high-level summary of Pasco's existing SRO regulations and then a bit of a status sheet, I guess, on the three applications that we've had so far that have been issued conditional use permits through our hearing examiner. I did want to note that we have not issued building permits yet, but the underlying land use permit has been approved for these three addresses shown in the agenda report. So essentially, this is a true discussion item. It's presented to council for discussion and a chance for staff to understand if there are any concerns or if council wants to express some kind of perceptions about where we're headed with this. I know that I talked about planning directors in Kennewick and Richland, and I think it's safe to say that everyone is maybe a bit puzzled as to why these are all of a sudden so popular. And maybe I'll just leave it at that. But we're all very puzzled about how the economics of these work. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, council, sorry, Mayor Bertamaloni?
Thank you, Mayor Barahas, and thank you, Director White, for pulling this information together. I had expressed some interest in looking at this a little deeper, and in the interest of time, I'll keep my comments, so try to keep them brief. Basically, if I'm doing my math correctly, the proposed conversions across the trade cities make up almost a quarter of the available stock of hotel rooms. That is a massive number to me, and that's a concerningly large number, especially because most of this is, you know, relatively low-income hotel and motel stock. So obviously, I'm very much in favor of improving our affordability of housing, but I'm really concerned about not having that temporary space for low-income residents. And we're talking about spaces where people would stay if they, you know, needed to, they had family coming in from out of town. Or if they were, needed a place to stay for a little while while either repairs or pest extermination or before they moved into a new apartment. Given that Richland and Kennewick have each rejected a conversion just over the last month. month, I'm sure that there's some of their concerns maybe aren't well addressed in our code or make sure that we really understand it. I just really, my thoughts is at this point in time, especially we don't understand exactly how this is going to turn out, because not a single one of them has finished yet. I'd be really interested in putting a temporary pause on approving more of these until we have an opportunity to see how some of these pan out and give us an opportunity to just let this, let the market settle a little bit and get a better idea. And the worst-case scenario would be, you know, someone converts these, find that they're not economically feasible, they, you know, jump ship and we have blighted areas. So I'm not sure that's going to happen, but I, a quarter of our, almost a quarter of our total units is, across the tri-cities is really a concern to me. So anyway, that's my thoughts and direction I'd like to go.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? I do have one quick question. These short-term, this is not the same as Airbnb, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. So it seems there's no more questions or comments regarding this particular topic. How do we proceed?
Well, I'm not hearing any consensus with Mr. Maloney's comments, or is there, are there additional concerns or concerns of the same nature? I do, I would say that the SROs themselves are allowed in C1 and C3 zones and maybe even C2 now that I'm thinking about it. We have not, the hotels that have been permitted here in Pasco are just about chronic nuisance hotels. They would not be a location you would direct your family or your friends to stay at. However, there's no record for me to make any judgment on if it's a good or a bad conversion. We don't have any record at all, and neither, neither does Kennewick or Richland. So I just don't know, and I don't understand the economics of these and how they pencil out and perform over time.
Would you have a question from Councilman Campos?
I guess if staff's looking for consensus, I think Proton Maloney brought up some good points, and I don't hate it. I do know that, you know, a lot of these came about from the work we did on planning commission several months back. I think there were some really good presentations. They seem economically stable at the moment, but you're right. One of the first presentations we saw, we want to be data-driven. And if it made sense, you know, maybe this is a lame duck. I don't know yet. So I guess I'm in favor of kind of going the same direction as Mayor Proton Maloney.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roach, do you have any questions or comments regarding this topic?
I do have a question for Councilmember Campos and in the planning commission's audience of these presentations, and that was, you know, were these, were these thought of as, you know, not just residency for people who are residents of Pasco, but as Airbnbs or VRBOs? Are they, are they something that, you know, landlords are trying to make profit off of? Or, did you guys hear anything of that nature in the presentations that you were giving?
No, and I think, if I remember right, I think this might have been one of the last decisions you might have helped with, the planning commission. But you remember the hotel that's right off of Lewis Street that's now being converted into a SRO? There was a couple there. We were talking about having some sort of like one-bedroom apartments and those things. And again, that was how the idea was presented to us, is just a one-business apartment or one-bedroom apartment. I think it's up to the market to kind of determine on what a business owner could or couldn't do with that proposed space. But if I'm not seeing occupancy, if, again, if I were a business owner and I were allowed to, I mean, I wouldn't hate using it for like a VRB or some, again, just whatever I could do to fill occupancy. But that wasn't proposed, I believe, to us as what the intent of these were. Again, it was, is an opportunity to, for low-income residents, a lot of the same residents are using the, are currently using the hotels for housing. And it was an opportunity for developers to come in and basically refurb what's already there for similar purposes, but they're not calling it a hotel, it's now an SRO. So that was the intent, at least for one property. Again, I think the market kind of dictates on what a business owner could or couldn't use it for, outside of, again, zoning and land use. But that's just one example I have, and if that's my memory and usually pretty decent, we can always go back to the record and look, but I think that's what it was.
City Manager Dave, do you have some questions or comments?
Thank you, Mayor and council. So I think it might be beneficial to hear a little bit from the city attorney. You know, we have a set of land use regulations we've recently adopted. I think council member, Deputy Mayor Maloney brings up some concerns, but I think we need to kind of understand what the process is and what risks may be associated with different actions the council could or may or may not take.
Great, yeah, so just real quick, one of the things that we have to be careful with, obviously, when we're dealing with any kind of land use, is there's this concept, obviously, we're probably all familiar with, of vesting. And so when we have these land use regulations and folks come in and they apply and they submit a completed application for a particular land use or permit, they vest to the regulations that we have at that time. If they don't get access to those, they can sue and get damages under state law. So this is kind of a weird area. It's not a situation where it's a constitutionally protected right that somebody, that we cannot put a, as Councilman Maloney stated, a pause. That's done through our laws, or the way we do that is through a moratorium. There's a statute that we used, I think Pasco used it a couple of times in a row with regard to marijuana regulations. So there's definitely mechanisms out there to do that and make sure that we're protected to be able to go through that. But it's just something that we'd want to be felt and suspenders on because it really could, the damages that potentially come with putting these types of quote-unquote pauses without going through our proper processes to come up with findings and then adopt a moratorium and go through that, really inoculate us from those kinds of claims. So we just want to be really clear about how we're, how we're going about that. But it's not something that I don't think you can put a pause on. I think it's something you could, you just need to make sure we follow the right process.
Councilman Campos?
I actually was looking forward to seeing some comment from you, Pete, because, again, not to, not to seem like I'm wishy-washy now, but just understanding what the city attorney has to say. I'm really pro-market, and if the market dictates and says that there's a need for it and a developer comes in and wants to put money on it, again, I think it's worthwhile, again, looking at good data, but also for the interest of keeping us out of potential hot water. Just looking forward to what other input from the council is, and again, hopefully we can give staff good, good direction on what we want to do here.
Councilman Serrano?
Thanks. So, Mr. Ferguson, just to confirm, we have three applications that are, sounds like they're fairly far down the road. These ought to be vested at this point, correct?
I believe so.
Yeah. So to place a moratorium on those three permits places us in great peril, correct?
I don't think we could do that, no.
Okay. So it sounds like there's not a whole lot that can be done for at least these three entities. Whether or not we can do a prospective moratorium, I think, is a council decision that I think we, one, ought not take lightly, and, two, really ought to dig into this. I mean, having three in the city of Pasco, that's certainly to the point of market bearing its fruit, right? If the water's there, the water's there. We'll have had three, three opportunities that I think, well, at least, let's see where it goes, but I think we ought to really, to these comments, look at prospectively whether or not this is the right thing to do with our ordinance. So I do think we need to revisit this, allow these three to play out, and then contemplate a moratorium prospectively.
City Manager Dave?
If I could suggest, so we, I mean, council kind of has two options right now, and that would be to kind of direct us on a path of preparing an ordinance and, and a process and bringing that back to council for consideration, that, for action. Another one might be that we back here in two weeks, that'll give us a little bit of time at a workshop setting to kind of talk about what that process might look like and maybe even doing a bit of an analysis of what other potential projects there might be out there. And then council can maybe give us more specific direction at that point. So I guess my question to council is, do we want to hit this workshop one more time to get a little more detailed discussion on it? Or is council ready to act on something?
Deputy Mayor Mill, Maloney, sorry.
Man, so, yeah, I think, Mr. Zabel, I certainly would not be ready to make a, necessarily feel like I want staff to be ready like next week for us to approve something. So I'm perfectly fine with hearing at another meeting, but I'd be very interested in understanding what that sort of moratorium would look like. So I'd like us to go down, further down the path than just another discussion where we rehash some of this. I'd want just, not just a little more data, but also a potential direction for us to go down. That's, that'd be my preference. And whether we choose to go down to that direction, we can, obviously, I'm not making a decision tonight.
Thank you.
That's my preference.
City Manager?
If there's a majority in favor of that, then we, I think we have a pretty good understanding what needs to be done. Thank you.
And it looks like the majority, one last comment from Councilman Serrano.
Sorry. I am absolutely in agreement with that, just looking at the application base, they're basically quarterly. My only concern would be is, do we foresee one hitting this quarter where we'd need to act before we may be four or five applications in? I mean, is there, is there any like consensus or feel out on the street?
I can, I can tell you that there has been other conversations that our office has been having, and so one of the things, and I'm not, I'm not saying this to convince you to do anything, but this is kind of a textbook situation of when you would use a moratorium to basically gather data, to, to figure out what's going on, to assess the situation. So, yeah, it sounds like, but we should be able to get a fairly quick process figured out for us, if that's something the council decided they wanted to do.
Yeah, again, I'm in favor. I think the question is, how expedited does this need to be? Does it, does it literally actually need to come back to us next week because we're concerned about too many more applications that are going to burn us? Or do we have three weeks or whatever the next meeting schedule would allow? I think that's my concern.
And comments from Councilman Campos?
I think City Manager Zabel had said, not next week, but the week after, so that, he said, it sounded like that would give him enough time. So, again, voicing some solidarity with Councilman Serrano and Mayor Proton Maloney, I think, yeah, let's workshop it again and get a good, good decision.
Sounds like majority would like to workshop it one more time. Councilwoman Roach, any comments?
Uh, no, I'm okay with workshopping it one more time. I'd like to spend more time with it as well.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so, it's ten. All right, next item on the agenda is item E, parks, off-season work and activities. And I am being indicated that we are postponing this presentation to next meeting? Correct, thank you. Item F, resolution orthophoto mapping intergovernmental agreement. Director Rekai?
I will actually just jump in, Mayor. So just real quick, this is a, an agreement that we enter in every other, every other year for mapping, and it helps us with our, giving us accurate mapping data topographically as well as spatially. It's an inter-local agreement, which is why it's in front of the city council. I mean, the cost of it, we're talking, it's a shared cost, and my number of jurisdictions, eighteen thousand dollars, eighteen thousand four hundred dollars. So well within administrative authority to approve, but it's an ILA, so we'll bring this back next, next week for council.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Sounds like we all agree. Thank you for that. And so we move on to item six on the agenda, miscellaneous council discussion. City Manager?
Done this evening.
Councilmembers. Councilwoman Roach.
Are you asking for miscellaneous comments?
Correct.
Um, I have none, but just to follow up on that SRO, I think next, I guess we're waiting till the next workshop to discuss the SRO item, which would be great, because I think I have our Visit Tri-Cities meeting on the twenty-third of February. So I'll get back to council with some comments about that.
Thank you. Okay, so, next item on the agenda is the executive session. City Manager, I'm indicated that we do have a need for executive session, correct?
That's correct, Mayor. It'll be here about fifteen minutes.
All right. So at this point, the city council will now meet in executive session to discuss, and I do not have a topic for the item.
Potential litigation.
Potential litigation, thank you, for fifteen minutes. Discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two-point-three-zero-point-one-one-zero. Item, item L, point I. So we will come back at ten twenty-one. Thank you. Thank you.